Here we go, boom, we won.
Hopefully it came back and second name too?
Yeah.
Oh wow. What a night.
Yeah, it was great. How are you Shane? Good.
All right, not much, please join me in flagging. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do the fore rain anymore in there? Okay, I'd uh, I understand the motion to approve the minutes from last week's meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from last week.
Here, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, morning.
Have a, start off with access entry permit, as I should say, for Dakota Hall, 1068 230th Street. Is that new structure going up?
I thought that's where, I seen that on Facebook, but I thought that way he bought it.
Yep.
No, but never. Did they buy all?
Approved the application for made access to County Public Right Way for Dakota Hall.
Second.
There's, there's a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Carries.
Did they buy all of the Jayhawk, just to have?
I think that individual bought a lot.
How many jaws, though?
I think they bought that whole.
Whole way to Jayhawk?
Yeah, then down.
Yeah.
Down there as well, I believe, I don't know that for a fact, but I believe that's, I think that's true. Yeah.
Next permit, I'm not sure what we want to do on this one. I'm back to the Crawcan one from last year. I don't know if you want to approve it, not approve it, what we want to do from 2020. It wasn't signed off on last year. We've had some issues or what have you. Here's kinda.
Have you had, have you had Justin look at it?
Justin has, I don't see.
What's your recommendation?
Justin wants to hear.
Hey, Justin. On the Crawcan permit from last year, what's your recommendation? Should they sign off on it, not sign off on it? What do you want to do on that? Here's.
Crawcan did authorize that special use permit last year. It's just an issue of, you know, I think we could hold them to that signature. Obviously, I think the commission should go back and retroactively sign that. I don't think we can necessarily want to litigate that per se if we had to, but we should probably sign it. And then we, it times up, so we can get a new one from.
We're already in the process of getting a new one and getting the.
Once that's approved, we can move forward on that. So Crawcan absolutely signed it, it's binding on their end.
Okay.
Okay. And I would say, I don't know how you want to sign that, or you want me to sign it, or the commissioners want to sign the bottom, how we want to do it, but.
You're the man.
Eric, is there a bond involved in that?
Uh, there was supposed to have been.
Well, now, let's back up, let's back up.
Okay.
We keep using the word supposed to be. Never in the entire history of that book have we've ever asked a bond, to my knowledge, or the previous commission. Probably by the book, it probably maybe should have, or could have, or would have. But any type of utility permit, commission never enforced it. I didn't enforce it, because I was told not to. So let's clear the air about that real quick. So. Should have, would have, could have, whatever the reason. We didn't do it because Crawcan and Real Water and folks like that was considered local, pretty much. So, but.
And that helps.
Yeah. Whatever the reason, we didn't do it.
I think from this point forward, we need to make sure we do these types of things. Because without, we, we had a run in with another provider that on our northwestern part of the county that we've had some problems with, that we really couldn't hold their feet to the fire. So, I mean, best practices would be something like this in the future.
I agree.
To make sure that we have.
I agree with that, yeah.
Especially, we've learned a lot. I mean, you know, that's the thing about life, is we learn things. And we've learned a lot through the wind farm process about having our, you know, Ts crossed and our Is dotted. Because we want to make sure that we're able to have things enforced and, and tell people that, hey, look, we're not happy with this, needs to happen. We learned that with our gravel situations with capping. We've had those conversations that worked out really well, but we had it in writing.
Right.
In our road use agreement. So when there's a problem or a question, it always falls back on what was signed, not what was said. And we've, and we, we want that protection.
Right. Yeah. And so with that, I take it we want to continue on with the permitting? Is?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, permitting, and there's a lot of permitting that I've seen. You know, we're permitting people to cut through our roads.
Right.
And they, and they're required to go back and pick them.
Right.
You know, so we need to make sure that we do the same thing with, this is a major project.
Right.
And it's caused quite a bit of grief on our part.
Right. And they.
Need to make sure we follow.
I do want to say Crawcan has been very good to work with.
I'm sure they have.
Yeah.
We, we've had another.
They always are.
Yeah, we had another little issue on 200 and, on Jayhawk, just west of 245th. They done a board the other day, and I don't know if they hit rock and it came up, or what have you. But we, we now have a little bit of a hump in the, in the road. And they are trying to get it smooth back out. If we can't get it smooth back out, then they're going to come in and have to cut the road and pave it, pave it back, so.
Just one more quick interjection legally. We don't want to stop things from happening. You know, I, you know, we're going to be talking about zoning after this meeting's over with. And, you know, it's not an issue of making stuff not happen. It's just a matter of making sure that it's done right. And so I think the policies that we've had in place prior are different than they are now, just because we're trying to get ahead of some of the things that could happen to our roads. You know, we've got.
This is a part of our, our overall broadband effort from Crawcan to, to improve our network. And, you know, this is just kind of a hiccup that we'll take care of. And like Eric said, they've been very good to work with, we're just trying to play catch up now.
Well, and Jim, I remember a conversation that we had, where we talked about Band-Aid money.
Yeah.
You know, we don't have, we don't have fix-it-right kind of money here, and we, we don't. I mean, we could talk about that all day long, but, you know, we're going to talk a little bit, and we might as well get it out of the way now, because Eric's here, 35th and Yellowstone. We, we talked about that bridge, we went out and we saw it. Eric and I are going to meet with the landowners around there soon. But those procedures that, when that bridge was shut down in 2012, it's Band-Aid money again. And we don't have fix-it money for that bridge. And so we got some really tough decisions we're going to have to make on that bridge legally.
So we're going to talk about that a little later.
Well, Eric's here.
What do you want to talk about now?
Well, we could talk about it, we're going to have a meeting with the two patrons that met with us. We're going to have Shane Walker, who's our map person, you know, the expert on mapping and helping us with that water movement underneath that bridge, which is a lot. The two patrons, Eric and myself, to kind of come up with, you know, kind of give them the bad news on some levels, that we don't have fix-it money, and that we don't have Band-Aid money. So we're going to have to figure out a way for them to kind of maybe help them with their processes in that area. Because they really, literally have to go four miles to get to their northern part of their property. And, you know, that bridge is a straight shot, but it's not possible to handle weight. And we were talking about recreational vehicles, but Ferguson tractor or small Ford tractor would have the same width as a, one of those and weighs way more than three tons with implements and things. So there's, there's liability there, too. And the way that it was, you know, the way that it was shut down, you can't get a car across there, but you can absolutely get people, human traffic could easily walk across that bridge. And we know, we're pretty sure that's probably happened. And it's not, that's going to endanger someone to walk across there, but there's liability issues all, you know, all over the place. And the, the other thing that's interesting, and Jim knows this, and Eric knows this, that's not the only bridge like that in Bourbon County.
Right.
We're very lucky to have those old trusses, but.
We got one up north there on, uh, just north of, of Seven Highway.
Right.
Thirty-five. It's been sitting there for years. There was insurance money collected on it, but nothing was ever done with it.
I think Shane said there's 11 or 12 bridges like that. And Jim, the prior road, I mean, any road bridge director in the last 50 years, 60 years, hasn't had the ability to fix out those bridges, because they would cost a fortune. I mean, and, and they're, and they're important. I mean, there's a really good example on that road where the patrons of that fine area have to go literally miles and miles out of their way to get to the other part of that area on the, and the land they own. And there's no way to go across the, the Osage either, because it's so deep there. And that mile stretch is, you know, you couldn't get a tractor, you couldn't walk across it, you couldn't. So forging it would be impossible in that area. So there's literally a road that existed that doesn't exist anymore. And the commission, the legal part of me, we were talking about the lawyer, it'd be, he doesn't want me to look at another road, but the lawyer in me says, we got problems. So.
We're going back, we're going back to whenever it was closed, 2012.
Right.
And readdressing what we have to do. Correct?
2012, they didn't have fixed money either.
No, they didn't, we don't either.
2021, 22, you guys don't have fixed, because it's, it's a million dollar bridge all day long.
Hundred and fifty feet long.
Hundred and seventy feet.
And how do you keep pedestrians off of it?
I, well, and the other part is, is that, well, I mean, here's the thing, too, if it falls into the, into the crick, creek.
River.
Whatever, what to call it, river, I guess.
River, I guess.
River, yeah.
The ravine.
The ravine, it, the county will be responsible to clean it up if they, if it belongs to them. Now, we know that there's walking trails and bike trails and things like that that want those types of bridges, but this sucker is huge. I mean, it's.
It is.
I mean, it's 170 feet long, and it's deceiving how long it is, because when you get down there, because of the way it's sitting in, it doesn't seem that long. But when you look it up on the stuff online, it's a long, really long bridge. And that's not, that's not, that's one of 11. And one of those bridges we still use, a lot, I mean, a lot. I mean, on Jefferson Highway, it's the same type of bridge built in the same type of era. I think it's slightly newer, I think it was 1906 instead of 1889. So.
Got different deck line.
Different decking. The oak decking was impressive. I mean, it was a really well-built, and really well-built. And the earthwork and the rock and the stone that they used for the facing and the, you know, the pylons to put the bridge in was really impressive, too. It's a neat bridge, but. And it had been, it had been graded, I mean, there's, the approaches on both ends, but the road going from south to north, I don't think you need to have it open anymore, because then the landowner owns both sides of the road.
I don't think it's been closed.
No, it has not been. It's still open. And we're still maintaining it. Which is what we've been talking about for years, about a maintained road, that do we really need to maintain it? We should maybe give it back to the landowner if he wants it, and he can turn it into pasture. Or plant stuff. So Eric's, Eric, Jim, everyone's been in a tough position as the road and bridge director the last 60 years, because the fix-it money is not there. No. And to do things the right way unfortunately costs a lot of money. I mean, Eric, Jim, I mean, everyone knows that.
But what we've got to do today, or next week, or the week after, figure out what's going to happen 20 years from now.
Absolutely.
We've got to start planning, because sooner or later, we've got to take some action. Well, it's not going to go away.
No, it's, it's something that you were involved in as road and bridge director. We talked about, you know, infrastructure. You know, we have a county that's population mass has declined since 1890. Everybody wants their roads paved, so I think Commissioner Beth had a really good conversation a while back, you know, in open session about, you know, everybody wants their road paved, but who wants to pay for that service? You know, it's, it's a matter of what services are people willing to pay for, and as money declines, and we can't raise taxes, we've got to keep the middle level low. What services is this commission, or the next commission, or the commission after that? What's their job function? And it started with Commissioner Albright.
It did.
She, she was on point. She always said, what is the primary function of the commission, and what services are we supposed to be providing to the citizens? And roads is definitely one of them, but how many?
Well, I think hopefully the next month or two months, we'll have a work session, invite the public, and talk about these low maintenance roads and these type of bridges. We've got to start getting some input from the public, what their expectations are. I mean, like you just said, everything we do costs money, but we're going to make some tough decisions. And we need public input.
Because without it, you're going to, I mean, we don't want to make the wrong decision. And someone's going to have to make a decision, though. That's what sucks. That's what's hard.
Always a ruin.
Before you walk off.
Always a ruin. Front of my house or my field is the most important ruined account.
He wanted to grade it every other week.
That's right. Need to stop that every two-year thing.
Yeah, once every four, yeah.
Anyway, I make a motion to approve the Crawcan Telephone Incorporated application for utility construction for 2020. Eric, a second?
I second it.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And again, we're working on getting a new one for 2021, so.
And, and I think Eric said this, but Crawcan has revolutionized our county. I mean, it's absolutely changed our lives.
We already do it.
I think you already did, yeah, you did on there.
And I think Susan, oh, she's not here, that, that might be a strong statement, but it's a big deal, that fiber is.
Oh, whoo. We got it at my house last week.
Is it good?
It's the 21st century.
Yeah.
Good deal. I need to see what you want to do on another situation here. I had a patron reach out to us yesterday wanting to borrow a bump sign.
Borrow?
Borrow for a week for his private lane going to a lake.
I, here's the lawyer in me again. I mean, I, we would really like to borrow, have people borrow things like a bump sign or, you know, but the problem is, it sets a precedent. A bump sign leads to a shovel, a shovel leads to a rake, a rake leads to tobacco. You know, where does it, I mean, I know there's some common sense involved, but obviously, we don't want to have any responsibility if someone hits that bump too fast and messes up their front alignment, or, you know, tire blows out. And it just goes on and on. So obviously, I think we have the ability to make bump signs, and we could sell signs possibly at cost. I haven't looked into that yet, but that, to me, is, I'm more comfortable with that than loaning out county equipment to a private citizen. So. That's just my take on it as the county councillor.
I think we already have a lot of sign borrowing going on.
Well, I think it's.
Especially on Arrowhead.
What do you mean, Jayhawk and Arrowhead, what?
Kansas.
Kansas?
They borrow lots of them.
That was really funny, Commissioner. Yeah, how many do they borrow, how many are we getting back? That's the question. Thank goodness we don't have chiefs or, you know, yeah. Arrow-headed.
Arrow-headed ones, I, I promise you, you cannot keep one up.
So I guess you could pour concrete and just have it on the ground, Arrowhead.
Can't do that, because someone can hit it.
Hit it, and then you go.
Make it flat.
All that's going to happen, someone's going to be borrowing all those signs and hurt themselves.
Self.
And sue us.
That is highly, that's possible, actually.
It's crazy.
Also, I just want to give you a kind of a rundown on our.
Should we finish, I mean, should we finish that issue up real quick? I mean, just, the commission has discretion to do as they please.
Right.
But as, you know, county councillor, that can start a scary precedent.
I don't think we, I don't think we have ever just let ordinary citizens, for the public borrow any of the county properties.
And you can go to Walmart and make a bump sign for $5, so.
I just had, had a patron ask, and I'm.
Think we might want to stay with our existing policy.
Okay, okay. That's what I'll let them know. Back on the permits, just, here's a rough S, or not a rough estimate, here's where we're at on permits so far this year. They're all. As you can see, the amount billed out is $7,550.92. We received back in $3,198.53. That just kind of lets you know.
Thank you so much.
Are they permits for buildings or what?
These are permits for culverts, utility permits, oversized weight permits. So just wanted to, I'll try and give you a quarterly on that, or I'm running a little behind there on the quarter, but kind of let you know where we're at on those. Give Jennifer credit there, she's done a great job keeping that going for us. We talked last week, Jayhawk, 120th to 3 Highway, we did get that gravelled and receiving a lot of compliments on that, so. Tree limbs and brush at the lake, we did get around Fort Scott Lake last week and got that picked up.
Thank you.
We're looking, hopefully, to start this week, Mother Nature allowing us, doing a little asphalting, and do some patchwork out on 130th, and then on Hackberry, kind of out by Elm Creek Lake. So we can kind of get the kinks worked out of everything, and then we'll.
Get that wing fixed, was it just out of adjustment or bent, or?
It's, it's bent, we had to order a new one. So it should be coming in any day on that. It was actually allowing a lip to.
Was you able to hire any new asphalt people yet?
Not yet, the app's out, or the ad is out.
Yeah.
So we'll see.
Yeah.
See what happens.
Lot of jobs in Bourbon County right now.
There is a lot.
Yeah, big competitor.
Yes, very much. The fence up around the cell tower will be done today. We had to assist putting a fence in, that should be, well, I say done, we, the rain kind of, we headed there this morning and the rain set in, so I'm not sure what, when it's going to let up, but.
Yeah, five, five stand the barbarn?
I think we went four. Yeah.
Talking about out here, or the new one?
The new one up on the hill. We had our section around there, we had to fence that off.
I used to own all that. I used to own all that.
Oh, really?
Yeah, a long time ago.
Yeah. There was definitely some good solid rock up there, so.
Good last bediza for cats.
There you go, okay. Equipment-wise, we had a rough week last couple of weeks. We did get the John Deere skid steer back that had the DEF issue. It had, the extended warranty had been purchased with that, so it was, for the most part, under warranty on that part. So it's back with us. Truck 134, the bridge truck. The motor gave out on, on the truck. They found a broken cam shaft behind number one cylinder. The cam does not rotate, and number two cylinder push rods are missing, and they're pretty sure they're in the, likely in the pan. So kind of had it, had them give us an estimate on what it would be for a, to put a new motor in that, and the estimate come back at $16,736.69. To me, that's a little high for that, for that truck.
It's really old truck, it's probably one of our oldest ones, isn't it?
It is. It's a 97, 98, something like that, and I believe you gave, or the county gave $31,023 when they bought that truck. So it's been a good truck, 97 Ford, F-800.
How many miles?
I don't remember the miles on it right now, unless I can find it.
Not really, because it just goes to one little location.
It's got 178,816 miles.
Oh, that's light months.
So.
It's just broken.
So what are you recommending?
I want to do a little more research and what have you. Right now, we put a pendle hitch on one of the dump trucks to be able to pull the trailer, so we're not shut down and trying to, to continue moving along. But I will come back to you with some options. I just wanted to let you know that that's what happened, and that's kind of where we're, where we're at on that.
So is that the only truck you got down? Except for the, except for the belly down?
Right, and we're getting ready to talk it here in just a sec, but.
Good, that's what I was going to ask you.
Going to ask on that one, okay. Truck, we did find the tractor that we damaged or what have you. We did find three of them, they're in, only problem's in Jackson, Mississippi, they're Max. We did go look down Parsons and 400, and those just weren't big enough.
Okay.
But we did go down and look. I don't know how you want to do this, what you want to do, here's what.
Yeah, what we're looking at.
How much?
Uh, 39, right at what we got in.
How many years?
2015.
So it's got the DEF system on it?
I believe so, yeah.
How many miles?
439, that, that concerns me a little bit, to be honest with you.
I know.
I'd rather see us another 15,000 and get something like 200,000 miles in the south, but that's up to you guys, and that's up to you.
That's fine with me as well, I just was trying to keep it.
It's hard to find a truck.
They are so hard to find.
We've been through that.
Very tough, yeah.
Yeah.
Busy that morning once. I'm assuming all road miles.
Yes, yes.
Any rebuilds?
Not that I'm.
And that truck, as it could go a million miles on a highway, but we're changing it just quite a bit, but.
Right.
Whatever you guys want to do, of course, but.
You haven't looked at it?
No, it's in Jackson, Mississippi, so that's what I didn't know. They have three of them, all about the same miles.
Fleet.
Yeah.
So we know, uh, a max, so save yourself. Be pulling the low boy?
Be, it would be pulling the low boy. That's what I didn't know, if you wanted us to go look, or what, what you wanted. Thoughts?
How long have you been looking?
Uh, we've been looking since the last month or so, at least. Just looking around, we've been over to Iowa, we've been locally here. We do have somebody with Freightliner coming to visit with us, I believe, this, this week as well, so.
Have you checked, like, Matt Dealers in Joplin?
We, we've got calls out to them, and.
There's a couple dealers out in Wichita.
Okay.
I don't know the names, but I can try to find out.
If you can find out, I'd be glad to reach out and, and see what.
But I'd save it.
It's.
I, I sure.
A lot of miles.
There's going to be lots of trucks on the road right now, there's not going to be just a.
It's hard to find.
Huge surplus of used trucks.
Right.
Yeah. But we might have to pay a little bit more to get that lower mileage, maybe.
Right.
You might not be able to find it, so.
Okay.
But that'd be my recommendation, but.
Look for a little lower mileage on it, okay?
I'd highly encourage you, I mean, you'll get more longevity out of it, we hope, so.
No problem.
Yeah, I'd like to see a little bit less mileage, you're 400,000.
Yeah, you get around 200, 240, 250, you've got some life left there, because again, you're going to change the application of the use to gravel roads compared to KDOT, you know, so.
Will do that.
You know, we've had, we had one that, that we basically retired and then brought, brought it back and put it in service. I don't know how many miles that thing had on it.
What are you doing with Sterling, is it still up and down?
It's actually, over at Merrell Kelly right now, they've, something about a shutdown switch or a kill switch. They, we'll see.
Okay.
We'll, we'll see where we're at on that. One last deal on equipment, the John Deere tractor with the sidearm mower on it, the internal gears on the PTO shaft gave out, so it's.
That's the second time on that one?
I think it is.
Yeah, we fixed that one.
Yeah, so they have some ideas on, maybe we can support the motor or what have you on the, the sidearm itself, but that's where we're at on that. So it's in the shop. And that's all the bad news I have on equipment right at this point. Just give you a heads up, tomorrow, running up to Lynn County, meeting with Jackie Messer, going to go over their computer software, grants, training that they're doing, things like that. Just kind of have a sit-down, one-on-one with them, so let you know on that. And then my Jayhawk wind update, they, we're going to be back to finishing capping the roads today, but again, rain took over. I saw earlier, they already had a half an inch this morning, so they postponed that. But they have 110th from 39 Highway to Eagle, and then they have 20th from 39 Highway to Eagle, and then also on Eagle from 20th back west, quarter, half mile somewhere there. Then they should have a roads capped.
Where'd they wind up buying their rock at?
You know, I'm not sure.
I'm just curious, doesn't matter, I'm just curious.
I'm not for sure which, which query they went with on that, so. Anyhow, anything for me?
Thursday?
Thursday. Eight-thirty.
We're going back to TNC to have a meeting with the manager down there regarding his road. Guys are okay with that ones, but just to keep you updated.
Yep.
Eric's put some numbers together, by the request of the owner, and some things he'd like to see done. We'll see how much money he wants to spend, so.
Anything else?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
I appreciate this update right here.
Yep, yep.
Kendall, you got a real property relief application?
We had applied, so if somebody's home burns down mid-year, they're already billed for that year. So if your house, if your house is standing January first, I'm going to grab my ass. So if your tax bill is January first, if your house is standing January first, that's what you're billed on for the year. However, if your house burns down mid-year, you can apply to have those taxes adjusted. And it's up to the commissioners on whether or not they would adjust those taxes. This particular one is a house that burnt down at twenty-three, twenty-six Jayhawk Road. The fire occurred on two-ten of twenty-twenty-one. And so the homeowners have applied to get those taxes adjusted. From what I understand, it was a total loss on the house, so there's not a house there I don't believe anymore. And so the appraiser's office will now, because they have this information, they'll go back out and readjust for future tax years. But this is twenty-twenty-one tax year that we're talking.
What was the date of the fire?
It occurred on two-ten of twenty-twenty-one. And so as commissioners, you have the ability to adjust these taxes for these homeowners. And a case where you may not want to consider that would be something that was maybe a really expensive property that we're, we're counting on, let's say, ten thousand dollars in taxes. If you waive that, then you have to consider anybody that might have collected those tax dollars for that tax year. This is a home. This is not a, not a business or anything like that. And so US commissioners have the ability to adjust these taxes. That if you choose to, they would still be billed for the portion of the year that the house was on property. So you've done these when people apply. It's not an automatic thing. So if somebody has a house fire, we don't automatically adjust these for them. They have to apply to get this. And it's called, it's a state, a state program. It's called real property relief application is what the state calls this, so.
What's the address, Kendall?
It is twenty-three, twenty-six Jayhawk Road.
Make a motion to approve the real property relief application for location twenty-three, twenty-six Jayhawk Road, the fire that occurred two-ten, twenty-one.
Your second?
I second. I motion.
Any discussion? Home favor.
Aye.
Question is.
I'm ready to use the rest.
I'd like to make sure you'll sign off on your request.
Is this out on fifty-four highway? Is that the location?
What's that?
Is it on fifty-four highway the location? Right up there, yeah. It's getting ready for him to sign us, huh?
I received a couple of calls from it. Somebody keeps unplugging this thing.
What's that?
Somebody keeps unplugging this thing. Finally woke up. Now it's got a boot. More of electronic. Okay, I'm going to add Jesse Pullman on. For noise ordinance for shooting range.
Okay.
Is this Jesse?
Yes, sir.
Hey, it's Little Rara, Birmingham County Commission.
Yes, sir.
So we have been having this discussion that I think we've talked a couple of times, a problem you've expressed to me on noise from a shooting range. Would you mind giving a commission description where this range is and, and where your property is located?
It's west of highway sixty-nine on, on highway fifty-four. I can tell you the exact address if you need me to right now. Just give me a second. But I live at thirteen fifty-three hundred ninety-fifth, and our property borders the shooting range all the way to fifty-four and along Mill Creek. But the problem is, I, I understand it's a business and I'm fine with that. And if they want to operate during normal business hours, but as it gets warmer and the days get longer, they shoot later at night. And then when the summertime gets here, they bring their thermal, they'll shoot till midnight, one o'clock on Friday through Sunday.
Okay. This has been going on for quite a while?
I mean, we've, we've lived there for three years and, but it's been going on, as far as I know, as long as the shooting range has been, been in existence, so whatever, five, ten years.
Kenny, come on, Mr. Counselor.
County Council just stopped.
Get the, get the legal side of this thing out here so we can roll around it.
So there are a couple of things. Obviously, you always have the civil remedies under the law. I mean, if you believe that you're. Like, I'm trying to be careful of my, my wordage here a little bit because I don't want to, you know, activate a lawsuit, so. You know, obviously, the civil remedies. I'll, I'll leave it at that. The county, I don't know. You know, it's kind of like the dog ordinance. I haven't looked at any sound ordinances that the county has specifically. I don't know if they exist or not. I can look into that. Obviously, there's a criminal aspect, you know, disorderly conduct, you know, is, is on the books. It's a misdemeanor. Root, insulting, angry, you know, there's, there's noise issues that can be tied into that criminal remedy too. So if the commission is so inclined to make me look into the sound ordinances, I can, and I will do that. You know, obviously, we can, we can get one started. You have to pass the ordinance, go through the proper procedures of doing that. But one of the things that's interesting is, is that business has been there. And they've had that shooting range. I mean, I think there is some, I know the city of Fort Scott has ordinances, and they're within the three miles. And we'll be talking about the three miles as part of our discussion.
I have watched it over the years and it has expanded and that.
Yeah, I mean, he just, he just built.
Go ahead.
I was saying, they just built more berms and, and have gotten bigger in the last year. I mean, with everything being closed, they had more people come down ever than ever. And that they just built more berms and have made it bigger in the last three or four months.
So I was just at, we asked our county counselor to look into, you know, the, the noise side of this or.
And the city, the city limits run, forgive me for not knowing this, the city limits, I know there's some strange boundary lines out in that neck of the woods. I mean, it's where Pete's is, is that county or city property?
Pete's?
The convenience store.
I know, I know that.
Belltown is in the city limits, correct?
The tire shop in the old colonial motel in the city.
Right. So it goes, it goes that far, it goes that far west?
No, those are spot, those are spot annex.
Right, but they're still city, they're still city limit.
It's not contiguous.
Right. So where's the continuous line?
I would say more back at the, like where the hotel is.
Right, the red, red ram.
Red ram. That's more.
Is the old restaurant?
Yeah, spot annex.
Uh, Axum's?
Yeah. So they're, they're easily within the three mile limit?
Oh, yes.
So.
Easily.
And really, the sound, the sound could carry easily into the city limits of Fort Scott, so. I might call Mr. Farmer and talk to him a little bit about it too and kind of see where we are.
So you want to put this on the agenda for next week?
I probably need a little more than.
Two weeks?
Yeah, two weeks I can get on.
Kendall, can you put this on the agenda for week after next to have a discussion about the shooting, no, noise ordinance for a shooting range?
Well, I don't know if we're ordinance ready yet in two weeks.
This is what, this is what's on here now. I'm just.
Okay.
It's just a placeholder.
How about we put noise complaint?
Okay, noise complaint.
So the eighteenth? I'll be ready by, I'll have some information ready by the eighteenth.
Okay, very good.
And I'll contact the city attorney and go through that process.
Jesse?
Yes, sir, I'm listening.
We're going to put this back on the agenda for the eighteenth of May and, and discuss it again.
Okay.
All right?
And I'll try to, I'll reach out on the seventeenth. I should be back in town by then, so I can be there in person.
Okay, very good.
Okay, thanks, sir.
You bet. Say, need to take an hour break?
At least ten minutes.
So nine-thirty?
Definitely a little break before we get into the final discussion.
What's that?
Let's take a little break before we get to the commission comments and.
Okay, that's fine. Take a, take a ten-minute break? Yeah, break for ten minutes. Get back in this room at nine fifty-one.
Take a break.
Yeah, take a break.
We're having a little meeting over there.
Yeah.
Heard for someone on the problem, just let you know.
You think I'm? What you do? So you're going to, so you're going to. I had a couple of dogs here, here in Hefield. Take them along before things come back. No, we don't. And a personal, personal fit. All the cat owners, I'm sure they're out there, you know, probably. I haven't been out there yet. No. I don't think so. They're hurt, right, the jerky, the, of three and thirty-nine? They go flat area, up there around.
Some of them is thirty or thirty-fourty?
Yep. Got about another week before probably the most weekly in the year for every first name. I'm waiting for some people to get back in, in February.
It's just a different way of looking at things, the different age groups that we have. And there's a different way to work with people from different ages. A lot of nursing, we have, nurses come up, there's certain things, you know, you have to. And there's different ways that people.
Personal thing.
Think and act and other race.
That's not a new thing, is it?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's twenty-four. We need charts.
Well, that's exciting. So are you having to go back and see different articles like that?
Important stuff here.
He shows him the up to the paper at being a rescue on the twenty-seventh.
That's great.
Well, he figured, how many day now? So I looked back in other rec and I, and there's.
Oh, you're kidding. Oh, God, that's horrible. Oh, yeah, that's terrible. Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, we should forgive those people.
Totally understand.
You better, you better stay here. I, I took a, I underlined a few things. That's the nursing part. You just underlined the key points.
Oh, I do feel you.
It takes a lot more in, in a lot of organizations.
Built, won't tell you also traps.
There's also a lot of public input.
Well, I didn't want to know, was he detained over there? Because you know what it makes people look like?
Yep.
If I get a advance.
County and city.
He's going to be arrested, then he gets arrested.
Yeah, he does say the city. Yep, so that's it.
To piggyback off of them or see if they have.
Oh, all of the, what's the actual case?
That's not what I was saying, yeah. I mean, I, I think a lot more studying has to go on because.
Right.
To me, this is confusing as it talks about.
Mm-hmm.
Districts and some. Nobody can understand any.
So I'll be, I'll be in a mock tomorrow. But so here, you tell.
And this will be my first question.
Well, let's not bail. That probably wasn't good.
Good for you. Making that money. A lot. I bet it's going to be okay though. Once, once you get rolling, I think you do all right. Are you doing just walnut or any other things or just? Yeah, yeah, well, good.
Play that around, hasn't it? It's called a bit of a round.
Big money, probably. I've always heard that.
Yes.
Is it?
I'll just get the wax, very time, it turns into a rock. No way to use it as drilling.
Mm-hmm.
Like a.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
So would you say?
Yeah.
The time.
Nine fifty.
Whoever's like question comment, who was here? County Council. Did he leave? Mr. Meeks. How you doing on dogs?
Selling so fast.
Can't keep up.
I went to Illinois today. Well, it was for me.
Elected officials? It's me, huh?
Sorry, I have to find, I tried to protect my paperwork this morning from getting, so I have to go through and find it here real quick. I had some notes. So I apologize. I might have said, I'm, that's it right there, that's it, okay. Uh, just a quick, um, update on the tax sale. We are receiving back the certified return receipts. I appreciate Kendall's office for tracking those for me. Um, they've been very good about getting them to me. Um, I did talk to Patty, um, before she, uh, went on vacation about just the, the timelines. Um, talked to, you know, the title company, too. They're, um, I think it's a great thing. I, I know I've been saying this a lot, but it's delaying our sale, and it's a good reason why our sale's being delayed. Is the homes in Fort Scott and Bourbon County are selling, and because of that, the abstract company is having some difficulty getting, um, information that we need from them. But it's a good, it's a good problem. Um, we are receiving back quite a few, um, of the green card certified mail, so people have been contacting me, and they're hopefully going to be contacting Patty Love's office. I received three phone calls yesterday with people wanting to make sure their back taxes are paid. So the collection process is still ongoing. Um, I think after this, after next week, I'll have another conversation with Patty, and we'll make the decision on how many parcels we want to include in the first sale. Because of what's happening in Bourbon County with the houses, houses being sold, we're definitely going to have to have two sales this year. Um, if we try to lump them all into one, uh, we, it could be until two thousand twenty-two before we actually could have a sale to wait on all the parcels. So good problem, but just kind of an update there. We already talked about thirty-five in Yellowstone, um, so we'll have that meeting and go forward with that. Um, I did go out with, to Red, Redfield, um, with two other county employees to take a look at those parcels that are broken up into that housing development. Um, unfortunately, uh, the variance that would be needed for three of those parcels is not doable to put in a septic system. Um, so I will be contacting the city of Redfield's attorney and also the, uh, Housing District's attorney, just to kind of maybe figure out a way that maybe somehow we can solve the problem. If not, um, you know, unfortunately, the variances are not going to be recommended by the county councilor to, um, have those done because the variances would be extreme. We have done variances before for parcels that are under an acre. The, um, smallest parcel that I've been told is point eight five, and these, I think, would be below the point eight five. Uh, they're not even close to an acre. Uh, three of the parcel, three of the homes could easily be, um, broken off into the, um, variances. And one of them would have absolutely no issues, but two of the, two of the houses are really, to the east are really close to, to each other, and it would be difficult to have those systems put in. You know, obviously, holding tanks would be no issues, but those systems are expensive because you have to get them taken care of monthly.
Have room for lagoons?
Well, the lagoon system, uh, when we were in Redfield, we drove and saw, um, from the road, the lagoon system, they're well maintained. I mean, they're on the western part of the community, so they already have a lagoon system set up. I think this is just an issue of contract interpretation, which we're not going to get into.
Right, no, I made private lagoon for that housing addition.
They're in the county, but that would not be on us, that would be on the landowner making that determination that they want to go forth with a, with a contract issue.
What requirement for a lagoon is?
I, I, actually, I do know. Um, you know, I don't know the square footage, I can't recall that from recollection, but it's obviously a fenced in area, so many square feet per house, you know, so they could set their own lagoon system up within the county. But lagoons are, you know, they're not easy to maintain, you have to keep them mowed, you have to keep them fenced, you know, critter free, you can't let, you know, Vernon dig into the, the, the processes, and you have to put warning signs up, and then you're also responsible for the liability of something or someone falls in, so. So they're not, they're, they're maybe more affordable on some levels than a septic system, but they have a lot more work to maintain them. The mowing, for one, is not fun, and just making sure there's not weeds and stuff growing in or cattails or things like that. So we're doing our due diligence, we'll, I'll take the next step, but at some point, we're going to have to step back and say, look, we can't give you the variances. The city of Redfield and that housing development will have to try to figure a way to resolve it, and if that takes legal means, then that takes legal means, but we won't have anything really involved except for, you know, the variances, which I wouldn't recommend because they, the acres are really small. And then the other issue, um, I did, uh, we talked, we went into executive session to talk about the acquisition of real property. Um, I did my due diligence with regards to that acquisition. Um, I'm still in negotiations with that individual. Um, however, there's some possible parcels that might be more suited to, to the county's needs. I mean, we have a lot to talk about with regards to, um, some type of multi-use parking lot. I mean, I've seen some pretty cool things online where you have basketball courts, tennis practice areas, you know, hopscotch, I mean, there's this, a lot of things you can do, so we'll keep, uh, I'll keep actively working on that, too. And we probably, the next time, if we do talk about that, I'll be asking for the, for the purchase of those parcels if, if so inclined, but we're still actively negotiating with, with the owner.
Right.
And then I'll start working on the noise issue, and then hopefully it'll give me some direction on the zoning once we get to that part of the agenda.
Okay.
I'm, I'm slightly excited because the nerd, the, the, the academic nerd in me likes discussions like we're about to have, I hope. Clifton's going to just be so, so excited.
So excited, eh?
And, and hopefully Ann doesn't barb on me too much with questions.
I'm waiting to get them.
People keep rolling in and out of here. Looking for Susan now.
We're going to go public comment?
Susan.
Hi, sorry. All I have is, um, you guys have an audit coming up, May tenth, and he'll be here all week, and we're already, um, pushing reports to him, so. And that'll be the week, that's it, anything for me? Once that audit's up, then I think we'll probably, I'd like to maybe sit down and talk about budget and a schedule and the things that we need to talk about. Um, I'd like to get with department heads first and then come to the commission.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. All right, public comment. Come on. We need to put a number in the hand or what?
Yeah.
Hi, commissioners. I'm Nancy Van Etten, I live at one, uh, seven, let's see, seven, let's see, seven, six, four, seven, six, four hundred ninety-fifth street, um, in Fort Scott, outside in the county. I think it's interesting, Jim, we talk about work sessions on the roads and bridges, we've talked about that for many years, since I've been coming to commission meetings, so I think it's, years back, I said, well, what, what's the timeframe on that? And they said, oh, we don't have a timeframe, no timeframe, but I think we really need to have those work sessions, have some guidelines set up as to how the, you know, how you're going to approach it, and, you know, make a decision to actually have it, take a risk and talk to the public and let them have input. And I think you can do it. I have faith in you guys. I would like an update on the inter-local agreement for the, uh, Lake Sura District number one, is there an update from Justin or Susan on that, where, where that's at?
I, uh, talked to Mr. Farmer last week on a couple of topics, that was one of them.
You want to come speak over here?
I talked to Mr. Farmer last week on a couple of subjects that did come up, um, so he is working on that. I mean, we, we understand that we're trying to look what twenty years from now looks like, and so there's a lot of terminology that he's checking on, so. Hopefully, it happens sooner than later, but we still got some roads to go on that. I talked to him about a, a, a ballot question and then sewer district issue. And this, and to be honest, the ballot question was more, and we talked about it a lot more, so I can get an update from him, too, maybe this week to find out where he is on it.
Okay, just to bring it back to a, a resident level, there's residents that are wanting to build, and they need to know how to go about connecting to the sewer and the cost and such, so that, that needs to be addressed so these people can go forward with their, with their building. They're kind of waiting on that. Um, also, to let you know, there's an, the National Day of Prayer Walk is being hosted by the Pioneer Kiwanis, and it's going to be on this coming Thursday, four thirty to six P.M. at the Bell Town Walking Path, so we'd invite you all to come, and it'll be hopefully the, a nice weather so that we can, um, have our prayer day here, so, thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Michael.
I wanted to give a shout out to Clifton. I may have been gone, but I've helped, uh, improve your Nielsen ratings on the YouTube channel, because I've been watching every meeting. And last week, when he objected or, or at least shown concern about hiring consultants for insurance. In my corporate career, we've, we've had, uh, consultants required by regulation or, uh, you know, like insurance, they call them, uh, auditors or actuaries. You really don't need a, like he stated, you don't need a consultant to tell you what you should be doing or what you've already done. A consultant will just come in, we used to say they came in, borrowed our watch, and told us what time it was, and left, sent a bill later. So you have a lot of resources in the community before we need to go out and hire a consultant for any amount of money. And that brings me to my next spot. I like to see my name in the paper under any other banner than the URS, but it was on the front page that I, you, I had given you information about advisory boards, creating citizens advisory boards. Well, you didn't get my, if you, if what you enacted to start a citizen advisory board was not what I told you, so don't dress it up under my name. Anything I would do would involve the voters, they would be citizens participants, not dictated to by this commission or any commission. So I, I would encourage you to go back and read, it's ninety pages, you don't have to read it all, but the primary point is to get the citizens involved in any topic, I don't care what, if it's the topic you assign to Mark or, or what topic, but it should, it should have a foundation with the citizen there. And I'm sure you agree with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. No.
No.
All right.
As long as I can talk wider, can I be part of the discussion? This last one here?
Well, ask the question, please. Can we be enough?
Oh.
I think you need to ask the question, this is the citizens talking.
Okay. Okay, well, my fir-, if, if that's where we're going. My, my first, um.
Who you are?
Oh, my name is Anne Dare, I live, you know where I live, most of you know where I live. Um, I'm a little, I was, uh, a little surprised that the discussion, this, uh, quote unquote zoning discussion was going to happen today, when on April twentieth, a date of May eleventh was put out. And then I'd also like to know, um, you know, of, how was this advertised to the public that this was happening today? Was it, was it put in the paper, was it anything, or what, what I, um, you know, and maybe that's not, but especially when I hear, you know, possible actions or whatever, directions and things like that, you know, uh, that might happen today, that, um, there might, uh, is this going to be a more than one and done conversation? Um, and then to, the, the next thing would be, um, where did this come from? Okay, uh, because I guess when I see under here says Johnson County, when we're talking about comparing apples to apples, it would be nice if we had something that actually compared to Bourbon County and not Johnson County, thank you.
Mission comment?
Okay.
I don't have anything.
I, I'll respond to Anne there for a second, at least in, this is my opinion, not obviously speaking for Jim or Lynn, um, but I think, uh, as far as one and done, those types of things, I would hope, and I feel this way about Lynn and Jim, that we are a commission that don't, doesn't work that way. We do like to do our research and get a lot of opinions, so that's just, that's neither here nor there, I'm just trying to respond to that one and done thing. I wouldn't view that as that, is what this zoning discussion is. Personally, I don't know how Lynn and Jim feels about it, but I think, I don't know that we've made a lot of spot decisions in the past few months. I don't think we have. Um, if we have, I know we've done our research beforehand.
I do have one thing. Whenever you're done, Clifton.
Justin? I have a question here. Uh, we voted to remove the mask mandate from these county buildings, et cetera, with exempt, but we have the Bourbon County Transfer Station that we need to make sure that they wear masks inside that building, because we have an employee out there that cannot be vaccinated. So do we need any change or motion, or what do we need to do because that person, health reasons at this time cannot be vaccinated?
That's a very, legally, there's some interesting things to talk about there. One is, you know, obviously, um, I can't force an employee, you know, the commission, and when I say I, I'm talking about other businesses I represent, I can't tell them you have to vaccinate an employee. So we got, we got a problem there. And two, the, the other really interesting thing, I just want to clarify something, a pre-employment application, you actually could request that the person have a vaccination card. So that's something to think about, you know, going down these roads and these paths with protecting an, an employee. And so down the road, having that, I mean, the reason I bring that up is a year from now, we actually might have to have that conversation about what does someone come in looking like as a new employee if COVID doesn't, you know, herd immunity doesn't occur, and we're, we're in the exact same place again. That person, um, obviously cannot get vaccinated, probably for some medical issues, and so the, the, the medical note is interesting, so the accommodation there under, you know, EEOC guidelines is really important. So the accommodation for her is basically, or for that person would be, um, to, um, have everyone wear a mask because she can't get vaccinated, she's worried about getting, or that person's worried about getting COVID. So, um, if that request has been made by that employee, then a reasonable accommodation needs to occur, but her interaction with the general public will have to be, uh, a mask, you know, will have to have a mask sign. Because of medical issues, we're requesting that you wear a mask, so the general public will have to be put on notice, too, that they need to wear masks. And six feet, and that's, that's, this is what's interesting, I tried, we talked about this a little bit, the CDC or MIT had a report where six feet, six, six feet, sixty feet, it doesn't matter anymore, because they don't, it's, it's, you know, it's not, so I don't really know what the best practices is, is anymore. We could con, contact our health board and see what a reasonable accommodation for someone who can't receive the vaccine and what that accommodation needs to be.
Well, her request was, of course, they have the barrier, in general, the public doesn't go in there, but if someone has to, or a request is that they be required to wear a mask to enter that little room.
Yeah, the, the, I think we absolutely can make that request of any individual or patron that comes into that location. The, the problem is, is enforcing it, you know, the, this is where it's interesting, it's a public facility, it's not privately owned, taxpayers support it, so if that person doesn't want to enter that building, we have to. it, so if that person doesn't want to enter that building, we have to come up with an accommodation for them to pay their bill, or interact with, with that facility a different way.
Do we have a shield up in that office?
Pardon?
Shield?
Yeah.
Around the desk?
From outside, they can't go in unless she lets them in.
Okay.
I mean, at the desk?
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a good accommodation for, for keeping the general public from having contact with that employee. The, I think it's easy on our end, you know, there's only two other county employees, or three other county employees that interact, there's a total of four, correct? I mean, there's three full-time, one part-time, or is that employee, okay, so it'll be easy to have that enforcement. I mean, Eric can easily have that accommodated, but...
And can we not put a sign up saying, due to medical reasons, we request that if you enter this office, please wear a mask?
I hope we could, because again, that was my goal.
Yeah, we need a reason-
I thought about her after we left here the other day, so...
Yeah, we need to reasonably accommodate that request, and so under the guidelines of the EEOC, we want to make sure that accommodation, I mean, it's, the disability is not COVID, it's the medical condition that the person has at the time of asking the request, and the fear that they have of...
So there's a, there's a counter in that building, right?
There is a counter, but we're asking everyone to stay outside and pay through the window.
I was going to say, if even if they were inside, do you have a plastic barrier in front of that counter?
Not on the inside, we have it on the outside, and we have a flip-up where they can do their business.
Any reason for them to be in, in the building?
There's really none.
Well, there you go.
So the mask, the mask mandate, could you still have that sign, you know, even people approaching the kiosk area that's protected by the shield, you could say, please wear a mask while you're interacting. I think that's reasonable, but the general public to enforce that is going to be difficult. And really, the guidelines now that I've, you know, read, obviously I'm not a medical expert, but the CDC is basically saying, if you've been vaccinated two weeks, you don't need a mask outside anymore. So the recommendation by the CDC is if you're outside, and they're having all that interaction into the kiosk outside, the CDC is saying, vaccinated, no mask.
And you've got employees running in and out in the office, I'm sure Diana can probably control them on, on wearing a mask while they're in her proximity.
Yeah. And obviously, we don't want to mention any names of employees.
Sorry.
It's all right, it happens.
Thank you.
Yeah. But yeah, it's easy to accommodate that, I think, especially, I mean, I really thought we had three people out there with the part-time, but two would be really easy to accommodate.
That's all I have, Lynn.
Well, I have, hopefully you've heard the announcement, maybe you haven't, the, we do have a new Economic Development Director at B. Works, Rob Harrington. He starts the tent this month.
Good.
He'll be located on the second floor of Landmark Federal, and if you haven't been up there, it's a super nice location, where he can actually do his business, got elevator access, stair access. So I'm excited to get this started.
Good deal. I do have one other thing I should bring up, too, gentlemen.
Look at here.
A citizen called, want me to meet with them after this meeting. I don't know if it's a commission, or as a grandfather, I don't know, but should I give the name? I want you guys to know I'm going.
Well, you can always say, you can always say that you're not representing the commission, and then come back and say, ask for permission.
Ask for me, yeah.
That's what I'll do. I just want to make sure that everyone knew where I was going. I'll go as a grandpa. Thank you.
There you go. You know, that's kind of a hyper thing, it'd be a real thing, if it's going to turn into county business, come back and ask for permission.
Okay. I like transparency.
Good. Now, it's been kind of a quiet week, really.
Thankful. Thank goodness for that.
Yeah, no kidding, because it's been a quiet week. And I'm probably, if I back to where Clifton was saying, the one and done, it's not the way we operate. We have quite a few public meetings. We'd ask Justin to go in and take a look at what zoning would entail, do the research, and that's where we are now, if we, if we decide to go down this path.
Yeah.
Then we'll start bringing it out into more public comments. So, Mr. Counselor?
Yes, and obviously, everything takes time. I, the, where I received, got this Chapter 19, Land Use and Economic Development, comes from the Kansas Association of Counties website. I was going to disclose that when I started the presentation. They're always best practice, you know, they're seasoned with counties' issues, and I trust their knowledge and background on things that are sometimes outside of my bailiwick. And so, I mean, I know enough about zoning to talk about it articulately, but this really is kind of a good starting point. And then I've included the statutes, and that's kind of where, I want to go over two of them specifically, because I think they have a, a big impact on decision-making processes with, with the commission. This is not an easy process, I mean, it, it takes time, it won't happen overnight, you know, going through the steps and procedures, you have to set up certain committees and have them come back and present to you, and so it's, it's a process. The two statutes that I found interesting are KSA 12-755 and KSA 12-558. The statute numbers that are pertinent to the commission with regards to zoning are 12- KSA 12-553 through KSA 12-558. I've included the, basically the six statutes that are of interest to the commission. Obviously, you guys can read through those and then come back and have questions or discussions with it. This does deal, the statutes are, there are some statutes that are specific to Johnson County, and that's KSA 19-2956. The other statutes that I just mentioned are specific to cities and counties located within the state of Kansas. Obviously, zoning is, is different than code enforcement, zoning is about land use and how it is broken up within an organization like the city or the county. You have commercial, residential, different levels of commercial. You know, obviously, the statute's pretty clear, you can't limit agricultural use, and those statutes, you can read through that, but you can't limit, you know, you can't say you can't plant soybeans on a piece of land that's purposed for agricultural use. I think that's, the statute's pretty clear on that. So, I don't really know where the starting point is, I don't know exactly where you want me to talk about, but really, to get zoning started, you have to have a planning commission, and that planning commission would come before the commission and make recommendations, and that's kind of, well, there's, there's two thoughts, you know, I'm trying not to be all over the place. You could put this on the ballot, or you could actually, the commission can make the decision to zone the county, but you have to go through the statutory processes for the commission to do that, and that starts with the planning commission. They'd be appointed, and then they would come back and make a presentation to the commissioners on what exactly zoning they would want. I know that's been brought up in the, in the past about special use. You still have to go through this process to actually establish a special use system. You can see on 12-755, it talks about, the government body may adopt zoning regulations which may include, but are not limited to these, and it talks about the special use district within the zoning area. So, it's, it follows the same statutes. And it would be KSA 12-755 subsection 5, is the issuance of special use or conditional use permits, and that was discussed quite a bit during the wind farm process. We were not established even remotely to go there, because we had not had a planning commission and hadn't been able to establish that unilaterally without going through the statutory process. So, obviously, now is the time, if the fine citizens and patrons of our county want to go forward with this, I think there's no better time than now to, to start this process. 12-758, which is, you know, 12-757 is a lot of reading. The agricultural land exemption is, is, I think, really important for this commission, because so much of the land within the county is agricultural use. You know, some of the terminology that was used during the wind farm saga was wind farm, and so farming is an agricultural use that you can't limit through zoning, and so there's been some arguments that have been made using 12-758 about what agricultural use is. I know there's some definitions, I didn't go through that process, but it'd be interesting to kind of see what agricultural use is, because different farmers use different agricultural uses for the land, including lumber, or, you know, soybeans, cattle, pigs, goats, chickens, on and on, so that, to me, is an interesting definition.
Rock quarries.
Rock quarries. Well, minerals are different, there's actually an exemption under the statute for, for rock quarries. The law there is pretty intense. I actually talked to Mr. Harris about this, the Misha, right, is very involved in the guidelines set forth on quarries, and there's some things about a quarry being over two acres and under two acres and things like that, but, you know, that's the thing too, that's really interesting to me, and I've talked about that a lot, about, there's already laws in place that do limit certain things from being built, you know, the FAA is involved with tower heights, you know, you can't, a pig farm's going to have some control by the, you know, EPA, and rock quarries, now I know, have controlled by the, are highly controlled by the federal government. The reason I'm laughing on that is I had no idea how highly controlled they are. So, it's easy for a farmer to go in and say, I'm going to build a rock quarry, but once they start going down that path, the application process, and then what they have to have in place when they get inspected is, I mean, it looks like a notebook, I mean, it would not be something that's just a page, and here it is. You got to have emergency preparation, you have to have environmentals done, you have to have your berms in certain locations, the overfill, the roads, the gra-, I mean, it just goes on and on, so it's...
And they're heavily inspected.
Right, well, it's just like a feedlot. Copper mine, yeah, silver mines, I mean, mines are different than, I think, mines and quarries are different than cell phone tower heights. You know, cell phone tower tights, or heights are different than, you know, a pig farm, or a slaughterhouse, or, you know, but there's things that are controlled that are not necessarily zoned, but are controlled by the higher-ups. You know, KESHA has control over sports programs, you know, within the schools, they can't go outside of that, they can't say, we're going to go off and do our own thing, and that's the same thing with a feedlot, or a slaughterhouse, or anything else, and go take-
Going in green bins?
Well, taking that tour, you know, you learn that the meat inspectors have certain rules that they have to follow, and if they don't, they can't harvest the product from the animal, so there's controls that are outside of this commission. So, with that in mind, a zone, a zoning, to me, there's big advantages to it. I mean, I'm not advocating for it, but there's advantages to it, and there's disadvantages, and so it's just a matter of what processes the commission wants to go forward with to make that determination. Obviously, what's interesting about Bourbon County is we have multiple small municipalities, one large municipality within the county, and there's, you know, the, our commercial areas is not within the county limits, so if there was ever a thought process about starting a new commercial development outside of the city limits, or housing development outside of the city limits, there's things that have to be controlled by sewer and water, and that, that is an interesting control factor, because without those two things in place, you're going to have a really hard time building either one of those, you know. Under the guidelines of the state of Kansas, you can't have a residential house built within our county under an acre, because there's no way to supply it with sewage, we have no sewage district within, within the county itself. So, that control is already a zone, per se, I mean, it's a de facto zoning, because you can't build multiple houses on under an acre in the county, because you're not going to be able to abide by the state guidelines for, for the sewer disposal. So there's one really good example of, you already have de facto zoning within the county, because you can't build multiple houses on a parcel of land that's under an acre. So that limits things pretty substantially when you talk about a housing development. So, with a special use permit, you know, that's something that a zone could happen, where you're saying, look, look, we can, we'll establish a housing development with multiple houses on an acre, but you have to do a lagoon, and we're going to write you a variance. We don't necessarily need a zone for that, because you can write the variance with the lagoon system if the commission, or really, in this, this area would be Clint's, Clint's office would come in and say, hey, look, we have this proposal, here's what we want to do, and here's the guidelines set forth by the state of Kansas. So, that's one example of where the law's already in place, that you have de facto zoning by just another law that has an impact on the landowner and what they can do with, with the property. Cell phone tower heights are controlled, I've learned this, cell phone towers are controlled, or wind farms are controlled by the FAA, and there's certain tower heights that they won't allow, because there's airplane traffic. So there's, there's a de facto zoning, because you can't have cell phone towers of a certain height, because the FAA won't allow that, or it can't be within certain distances of an airport, or certain distances of a home, you know, things like that. So, going through this process and learning everything that I learned, I mean, you have a de facto zoning through just restrictions by federal authorities. So when you take a step back and take all that into consideration, zoning for me, on our county level, is what does a commercial structure look like outside of the city limits of our municipalities, and what does a agricultural structure look like outside of, of the municipalities? Because the lack of water and the lack of sewer creates obstacles for any future expansion within the county. Now, there is parts that I think, I think one of the things I would really like to spend some time on is the three-mile zone. I've included some information from KAC on that, but that three-mile zone, I think, could be used to really benefit our citizens, because within the city limits of Fort Scott is where the water, the utilities are. You know, we know that we have main utility lines that run in the county to the south, that is in the county limits, but could be used with city utilities, and that's where the expansion would come commercially. But they're also, you know, free market too, this is, we go on forever, Commissioner Beth, on this one. The free market is an interesting thing, you know, there's people that have moved to our county because we're not zoned. And so I know of one agricultural business that's here specifically because it's a non-zoned county, and they're not doing anything illegal, because they can't, because the EPA won't allow that to occur. I mean, they're monitoring that organization, because they don't want their water, we don't want our water systems polluted by runoff from a feedlot. So, you know, there are people that want no zoning, because they want the use, to be able to use their property as they see fit. And I'm not, sometimes, that's not the right thing to do, you know. Obviously, you can't walk into a theater and yell "fire" when there's no fire, and you don't want your property to be destroyed for future generations. You know, we have a lot of oil wells in our fine county that are dormant, and will be very expensive someday to cap, and that is an example of where zoning might be an advantage to future generations on solving that problem. You know, having a special use for oil exploration, or, you know, we have strip pits, and we've dealt with this too, and Mr. Commissioner Harris has dealt with this too, where in our southeastern quadrant of our county, we still have, for future generations, that coal might become valuable someday. I mean, I, highly unlikely, but it could, and that's something that we've dealt with too, is strip, strip mining in our county. So there's another interesting scenario that could occur with a special use zone under 12-755. So, there's lots of options, you know, I don't know, you know, to me, code enforcement is totally different, you know, the square footage size of a home to be built within the county, so many feet from the property line, things like that, that's a code issue, not necessarily a zoning issue. Zoning is a land use, where code enforcement is what is put on that, you know, what can be put on that land. So, if you designate a piece of land for commercial use, then only a commercial structure can be put on that property, or we designate it for residential, excluding the agricultural use, would only be for a residential property. And what's interesting in our county too, is, you know, we have a religious organization that has a lot of parcels within the community, and how would we control them with their lifestyle, you know, that they've chosen with that form of religion. And so, religion becomes part of our zoning issue, because we have a large community that, they do awesome things for our community, but how do you control if they want to put a sawmill, or a greenhouse, or a bakery, or something like that on their property? And really, that, now we go back to what the federal enforcement does, the state of Kansas has enforcement issues with food preparation. In greenhouses, there's not much at the federal level I can find, except for some chemical stuff, but hopefully they're not using large amounts of roundup, or something of that nature. But a sawmill has guidelines too, that are controlled by a different level than, than the commission. So, when you talk about zoning, it's about land use, and when you talk about code, code enforcement is about structures that are being built within the zone. Now, there's the special use- Now, there's the special use under twelve seven fifty-five, that's a whole nother ball of wax. And you have to be really careful about designating special use and restrictions to certain industries specifically. You know, I I mentioned, you know, the reason I mention this, I'm not to be, it's not a perversion. It's just a really good example, is gentlemen's clubs. There's a lot of case law on those types of establishments or pornography places. There's a lot of really good case law on on those types of establishments being built within a county or a city municipality. You can limit things that are morally corrupt, I guess, is a good, I shouldn't say that, because some people, I don't. I mean, I, my morals are different than some other people's. How about that?
There you go.
Right, where I wouldn't necessarily want that in my backyard. But, you know, pig farms came up. And, you know, pig farms are fascinating, because, you know, we have a future business expansion with, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm behind. I mean, I gotta be careful of opinions, Commissioner Harris. Really careful. But that could spur side businesses. And one of the side businesses that it could spur is pork production with pig farms. You know, they're wanting, let's just say, a hundred pigs a day to come into that facility, or even fifty pigs a day. Well, that could really help a farmer here locally to start raising pigs again. You know, you know, in the early eighties, my dad and his business partner were really involved in pig, pig farms. And so I grew up around one. And I know, you know, what can happen with the smell and the runoff. And, you know, there's lots of frogs and tadpoles and, you know, baby piglets running around. When you're eight years old, that's a fun thing. But the smell for an adult might be a different thing. So, but that's not controlled by the commission. That's controlled by the EPA and also by the civil courts, because you have remedies within the civil area that can stop that from happening. So having those-
You have a lot of regulation already.
I don't know, I don't know if the word a lot, I mean, the the regulation's there. So, you know, as county councillor, you know, someone comes to me and says, look, I want to, you know, we really wanna stop this pig operation from happening. Well, my first response is, well, how? You know, it, the land sold, the contract signed, how's it gonna impact the people around it? And so the people around it, you know, obviously have civil standing, where someone that doesn't live within the smell or the runoff or the impact on my property wouldn't necessarily have standing. So zoning would actually create some standing for an individual, because they're saying, well, look, they just built a house in the middle of that commercial development, or that's only been zoned for commercial. And really, if you think about Bourbon County, there's not a whole lot of areas where we can necessarily zone commercial within the county. And so now you're taking a zone that's huge and basically taking it and creating a very small area that would meet the standards of what a commercial property in our minds, what standard might be. Three, three phase power, water and sewer. Those are hard to get. I mean, the development over in Deerfield, I mean, they got a, they, you know, put a line in specifically for that property. But if you think about that coming into Bourbon County or Tyson Chicken Plant coming into Bourbon County, you gotta have the natural resources. And so the natural resources are in a close proximity to our major metropolitan area. So there's some common sense involved, too. I mean, we're not gonna have a commercial property start in northeastern Bourbon County, because there's nothing there for them to build off of infrastructure-wise, unless they wanna spend a whole heck of a lot of money creating the best, basic necessities, which include water and sewer.
Half of that area is underwater.
We have, well, that, that's a, that's an interesting, you brought that up, because that was on my list. The floodplain issue in our county is extreme. You know, people don't, it's, it's crazy to actually get a map and pull up the floodplain, because a lot of our county property is under floodplains. And so that's controlled completely differently than property that isn't in the floodplain. You can't build and get a mortgage in a residential home in a floodplain. And if you do, your insurance rates are gonna be astronomical. You can't build a structure, a commercial structure within a floodplain, because of the same, same issue. And so you look at our county and there's multiple streams and multiple areas that are under the floodplain. I mean, just, we, I mean, think about this, with our new sheriff's department and correctional facility, we had a floodplain issue. We had to make sure that we weren't building a structure within the floodplain. And people would think, oh, that's just a little ditch that runs through there. But, you know, every fifty to a hundred years, that water's over that bridge. I mean, Ray She- back in Ray Shepherd's days, they had to move cars, because that back of their lot is underwater. So you think about floodplains running, you know, the city of Fort Scott are within the county. And there's roads, gravel roads that are damaged constantly by moving water. And so that restricts your ability to build within the county, too. So there's another example of a law that's already in place that restricts people from using their property. And some, like I said, sometimes you want that restriction. You want it there.
But you can't say you can't build in a floodplain?
Well, you-
The entire state of Arizona is a floodplain.
Right. Well, you could build-
You just have to, you have to permit for it.
Right. You have to permit for it and you probably, from experience, you're gonna have a really hard time financing your project. You, if you wanted to build something within a floodplain and you had the cash to do it, you're not necessarily gonna stop that from happening.
That's why you can't say you never can.
Well, I understand. You can, you can, there's always a, a way around not building in a floodplain, but you're not gonna get financing for it.
Then you say limits Fort Scott, you have to have a flood certification.
Oh, you have to have a flood permit?
Elevation.
Yeah, you have to have a flood, any in the county, that's why we have a flood, we have, you know, we have a floodplain manager at the county level. Anywhere in the county, they still have to pull the floodplain and get a flood permit.
Bates County and see all the, what they've done to put berms around agricultural land, so to make it within the floodplain.
Right.
So there, there's remedies to building in the floodplain.
It's expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You got the money.
Right.
Wanna live in a floodplain. I know even in my little part of the world, water gets up to the second step on my house. So, you know, it's a, it's always problematic. If I got my basement, then I'd probably not be able to afford the insurance.
Right. Well, I know from experience that flood insurance for a residential home that is built within the floodplain accidentally is around four to five hundred dollars a month. That's just the insurance. That's not including your mortgage payment and property taxes. So it makes it to where you can't afford the the residence.
Like, you know, it's just like someone going to a new construction model, using straw bales for insulation in the walls. Try to get insurance on it.
Well, and that, and that house has been built in Bourbon County. And that's a different issue. That's a coding issue, you know.
I don't know.
Adopting the universal building code is a totally different issue on what land use is. So I haven't spent a lot of time on codes. You know, obviously, I'm very opinionated when it comes to codes in a, in a rural, rural America. It, that's a whole nother ball of wax. And I- Totally different issue there. Cause, you know, cost, there, there's, there is a very fine line between growth and wanting growth to happen and actually limiting it, because you've adopted a code and the codes make sense. We don't want anybody to die in the fire. We don't want anybody to have a structural problem with with a new, new build. But sometimes, you know, sprinkler systems in a two-hundred-year-old building are not, it's, it's very expensive.
It is, but it's designed to save lives.
Yes, I understand. But there's a point of the cost benefit analysis, too, is a, is a very interesting concept.
It's not my responsibility to have to tell you to build your house. It's not my responsibility to keep you safe in your house you build.
That's right.
Unless you have a planning, a city planning permitting process.
There, there are-
We don't.
Yeah, we don't.
Right.
And I know, no reason to go toward the codes area. At codes, it's very, I used to do it, city of Fort Scott, seven years of codes and administration. Codes is very difficult, to, number one, to enforce and to really put those kind of rules and regulations. But it's all about safety.
Right. No, and there's something, and, and, you know, and, and, you know, Johnson County is, is a really good example of where the permitting, permitting process for new residential build is part of their, part of their system. And there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. But rural America-
Unless you're trying to build there, which I know somebody that is, and it's a nightmare.
But I know somebody that builds lots of homes per year, and he would probably say it's a nightmare, too. But that's off the record. Yeah. Cause he has to go through the, he has to go through the process. And then the processes are there, Commissioner Harris is correct, the processes for codes are there, because they want that protection. And, but free will is, is an interesting construct in the law. Because, you know, you can't go into the movie theater and yell fire. You're not allowed to. It's, that's not in the best interest of the safety of the individuals within the movie theater. So the same thing can be said about, about a feedlot. You don't wanna buy a major water source. You don't want the runoff to, you know, harm the waterways or create problems within the ground systems, water systems. And that's really controlled by not a commission, but-
But that's already controlled by EPA.
Right, exactly. And that was my point.
Yeah.
But free will, free will is also an interesting thing when it comes to zoning. It, it's part of, if someone is economically able, like Mr. Hoy was talking about, to build berms and a water collection system with a water purification system and wants to bring three-phase power into northeastern Bourbon County, at this time, they would have a right to do that. But it would not be affordable, it'd be very expensive. I mean, you would need something that is outside of our thought processes for that to occur.
Yeah, well, the last two years, we checked into what it would take to get three-phase power to a location. And it was-
Very expensive.
Totally. Out of reason.
Yeah, and during the, during, during the hemp, during the hemp research, you know, we were looking for three-phase power in a, sorry, let me just get my, in the northern, kind of the northern, central, central part of the county to the north. And the, the cost for three-phase was shocking.
It's very shocking.
Yeah. Hundreds of thousands of dollars to get it to the area that this business owner was interested in. So it was cost, it was cost prohibitive for that to occur.
So was the, the ADM pipeline to the water treatment plant, was that permitted or, or special use? Or how did that come to be?
I, I'm not sure. I wasn't here then. I mean, I think that was done-
Across state lines there.
Yeah. Well, you can do lots of things across state lines.
I know, but I'm not talking about running out of liquor.
Right, right. Yeah. No, I mean, I think, I think that-
You have enough money, you can do anything you want.
Yes, you absolutely can. In a nonzoned county, if you have enough money, you can do a lot of stuff.
I'd like comment on the zoning if we could.
Well, peaceful enjoyment is a different issue, though. Peaceful enjoyment is a civil remedy.
First three words in a planning and commission dialogue.
Right.
What is that? Sue anybody for anything.
You're gonna be sued for any reason.
Justin, here's my thoughts on zoning. I would be totally surprised if this county, if our residents want total countywide zoning. And at this time, I'm not sure if I would support that, because zoning, lots of folks don't understand it. It's land use to control their use, but also protect their use. So my goal as commissioner is look at the minimum of a, and I'm gonna back up this minute. I watched Lynn and two other commissioners take a brow beating in here over wind farms. And they kept sat there and they sat there and said, we can't do anything. Well, I'm a commissioner that I want you, as a wind farm operator, to fill out a permit. Or a tower, I know where there's a new tower up north here, it's too close to a house. If it falls over, it's gonna get the house. I want you to give me an option to say yes or no, it's good for Bourbon County. But I do, I'm in favor of a commission, planning commissioner or something, telling the commissioners. But, and it's not a permit to say yes or permit to say no. It's a permit to say, this, sit down and talk, this out. And that didn't happen last time, cause Lynn, I heard him say several times, we can't stop this if we want to. We can't do anything. So why have the meetings?
Right. Well, I think, you know, I think something positive-
We had multiple meetings.
Oh, I know what.
And we went through the legal aspects of this.
You did?
And there was no legal remedy at that time.
I know what.
So what I, when I was saying legally, we could not do anything.
I agree.
We could not. And if you wanna go down to a special use permit, that's the only way you're gonna stop it.
I agree. I'm not saying I wanna stop it. I want, as a commissioner, the opportunity to review it.
Right.
We did review.
But you couldn't say yes or no. Your review, your review, along with they met the guidelines that was kinda set out by, by the airports and things like that. You could not say yes or no.
We could've. We put more and more things in those contracts.
Well, I think, I think what Commissioner Harris is saying is, is that because we were a nonzoned county, it was difficult for us to tell the landowner that they couldn't build a wind farm.
Well, and still, that's gonna be, my contention is, is I'm a free state Republican, and I don't like the government telling me what to do.
Right.
And we've got enough regulations on, on the book, that if we have legal remedies in place, that we should be able to use them.
Well, I don't, I don't have the, I don't, and this, just to talk this out for a little bit, cause I completely understand where Commissioner Harris is coming from. And, and on a lot of levels, I, I tend to agree with him. And I'll, and I'm gonna tell, tell why here in a minute legally. So there has been some things that were controlled by the wind farm by using the, the powers-to-be that the next step up. You know, obviously, the, I don't remember the species, but there was a, a bat that they did a lot of studies on. And they, they moved some towers because of that migration pattern of that bat. Or the FAA said you can't have towers within so many areas, you know. And then, then they also said there was limitations on lakes, bodies of water. So then what happened was, is that we started talking about some type of de facto zoning within the, within the wind farm district itself. And that actually was put to writing and was approved by the commission and by the Jayhawk Wind Powers-to-be. It was signed off. And so we actually have a de facto zoning within the county now, because we've, the precedent's been set. And so now, we have setbacks along county roads. We have setbacks for residential homes, to commercial structures, to barns, to outhouses, things like that. So, you know, some of the maps are really fascinating, because you take those setbacks into consideration that were agreed to by the wind farm operator and the commission. And it limits what could be built within that district.
But that would not happen unless the commission would, you know, been in negotiations to, to actually look at those issues, which we did.
Right. But the problem, the problem, the problem that Commissioner Harris has, and it's very valid, is, is that the question was asked of the commission, can the commission stop the wind farm from occurring, period? And I, the answer that I spent numerous months researching is that we can't, because we were a nonzoned county.
That's correct.
And so Senate Bill five twenty-nine, that was recently talked about at the state level. I mean, the state was trying to enforce a statewide wind farm, or a state-fied, careful wind farm. Statewide zoning, and it ran into the same kind of problems that we experienced here, is that free will and the power of contract is, limits, are limited by a zoning type environment. And so when you have a nonzoned county, because the patrons of that county choose to be nonzoned.
And we made that point many times.
Right. So, but to go through the, the issue of trying to get a special use, you still have to have a purpose, a planning board, a comprehensive plan. You have to go through the statutes to how that occurs.
Same question I asked, asked you before. Are we gonna target one industry?
Possibly no.
Possibly yes.
But possibly yes. You gotta be very careful about the planning board and the comprehensive plan on what is presented to the commission. It would have to be highly vetted within the industries that we're looking to limit.
Right. And I'm a free state Republican, too, and I take offense to you saying that, actually. None of us here want to tell anybody in this room what to do in their property, building. No building codes, no overall zoning. But as commissioner, if we don't put something in play, don't ask me to come to a meeting in there with two hundred people breathing down my neck, yelling at me for something I've sat there for three months, saying, I can't do anything. What the heck did we waste our time for? I don't wanna go through that, either want a permit process.
But without the intervention of the public, we wouldn't have got the contracts we did. We had quite a few people come in and give us ideas that we needed to negotiate. That was a negotiation process.
That's true. But the contract, I'm not saying you didn't do anything, but the contract, the bottom line is, you, you did a good job negotiating, but you had not the tool to say, yes, it's a good idea, no, it's a good idea, what can we do?
Well, that's, and this is, and this is what, I mean, there's part of, there's parts of this job. I mean, during that time, we were all under a lot of stress. And it was, it was very difficult at times being involved in the process. I mean, I, I learned a lot, I enjoyed it. And, you know, now, outside looking in, you know, being able to take a step back a year after the fact and saying, being able to stop it, in a nonzoned county, there is literally, in my humble opinion, and I think I have other attorneys that backed up this opinion, that were hired by the commission, is there was no way to stop a person who signed a contract as a private individual with a private company to build a, a structure on their property. With, if we had zon, if we were zoned and we had height restrictions, I think, I believe pretty strongly that those height restrictions, they would have built those wind farms under those restrictions. Because you still, telling someone they can't build a wind farm on their property is really different than restricting how it's limited on the property. And so when we were in those negotiations about setbacks, I mean, some of the requests were to the point where you would never build another wind farm anywhere in the county, because the setbacks were so extreme.
Well, it's kinda like state mile.
Yeah. So I, you know, the happy, the happy medium is, is that being a Kansas free solo Republican, which is a really fascinating construct- Solar Republican, which is a really fascinating construct, you know, I was born that, I was born that way, you know, I was raised that way. And so, when you're raised a certain political party, you know, you, 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 on some levels, it's guilt by association. But when you get older and you realize what that means, you know, it's, it's a different construct than telling someone that you can't build a structure on their property, like you just said, Commissioner Harris. So, I mean, to me, it's, you want safety, you don't want it falling in the road. But I've said all along, and I think Mr. Hoyt has already articulated this on some levels, is you have the civil remedy. You know, if a product like Finfin, or a product like talcum powder, causes harm to someone, you're going to see the commercial on TV, and you're going to get the 1-800 number, and you're going to have a civil remedy. Now, what's awful about that is people most likely have died because of that interaction with that medication, or the interaction with that product, but there still is a remedy. You know, and I, you know, you talk about trucks going down the highway with scrap metal in them, and you don't have the tarp over, and a piece of metal falls out and kills somebody. Well, you can have all the regulations in the world, but that driver forgot to put the tarp on it, and that metal fell and killed somebody. That person who was killed, that family has legal recourse.
But I'm also, I'm just not targeting wind farm. I'm talking about tires. I can show you a tire that was built two years ago that's too close to a residential. Kids are playing in the yard. If that tire falls, it's going to hurt somebody, maybe.
Right.
So, that is part of my goal, is to have an advisory committee.
Well, if you look at that part of it, though, with the de facto zoning we have in place, you have, you have distance restrictions.
That's how they built it then, two years ago. Must not have been-
Well, we didn't have a, we did not have a contracted list.
I mean, the one I probably talked about, the houses actually built after, well, those two deals were built at about the same time.
Yeah. Two years ago, we didn't have any restrictions on any setbacks of any towers within the county. And now, now we have a pretty strong setback process through the agreed. And, you know, obviously, I'm going back to Mr. Harris on this, and agreeing with him on some levels, that's within that zone. You know, if, if the planning board and the comprehensive plan wanted to adopt that setback standard that was put in place by the wind farms, and that, that planning board and that comprehensive plan could be presented to the commissioners, they could adopt that. And it's, it's pretty restrictive. You know, you wouldn't be able to build that same wind farm project in northwestern Bourbon County, I don't think, because you're going to have a lake that's too close, you're going to have houses that are too close, and you've got a power line system that's too close. I mean, those setbacks would cause-
And too many floodplains.
Too many floodplains and too many roads.
Yeah. But as Lynn mentioned, we didn't have anything in place. We, we didn't know they was going to put that tire up two years ago. If it was free-for-all, so how would we have stopped it? We wouldn't, because we didn't know it.
So, then again, then again, if the people didn't like it, they did have a civil-
But they might do that.
Right. I'm just, well, I guess, I completely understand where Commissioner Harris is coming from, you know. But what, what I think Commissioner Harris is talking about is zoning. You know, you're talking about a tower that's being placed anywhere in our county. We want to know about it. That's zoning. That's use of property.
Yeah, land use.
Land use, right. So, land use is zoning. And so, to do that, you'd have, within the planning board and the comprehensive plan, a special section designated to towers, cell phone towers, microwave towers, we don't use those much anymore, but any type of tower that would be placed in Bourbon County.
Any, any structure over a certain amount of feet.
Mm-hmm. And that's where it gets interesting, too, is what is considered a tower. You know, we, we have a cell phone problem in the eastern part of our county. And I, you know, there's private individuals that have antennas for their cell phone service. I can think of one on 54 Highway that would, would need a special use permit to be built if the comprehensive plan is adopted, like what's currently in our north, south, I guess it'd be, what is it, southwest, southwest quadrant. So, I can think of two towers that were recently built for internet service for residential properties that would need a special use permit if the comprehensive plan was adopted that was used in the-
What is wrong with that?
And we would encourage that kind of construction, but-
And there's absolutely nothing wrong with that, but it's, it's, it's an issue of what someone can use with their property. That's the question. Like, what, what restrictions do you want to have on someone's use of their property?
See, my goal is, that contractor to tell advisory board or this commission, "There is no residential houses within so many feet. This tire is not going to fall, hurt children."
Right.
So, just some simple guidelines. I'm not here to tell that guy, "No."
Right.
I'm just here to tell that guy to order.
But once you get into special use permits, you're going to be telling people, "No."
And like Ann said, there's not, maybe not necessarily something wrong with that, but it's, you know, you've got to be, there are lots of structures that can have the potential of falling on someone. There's old barns in our county that are way more dangerous than any tower that we have. There's grain, I know, two grain, two silos that are extremely dangerous.
I've got 50 and 60-foot trees in my yard that would fall on our house.
I'm creating the banter as all I'm doing.
Well, but if you have a certain, you know, 60, 75 feet, something, but then, I think we can look for an excuse for any reason.
Right. Trees are way more dangerous than cell phone towers. Way more dangerous.
You know, in light heels, hit a tree and blow a bark 300 yards.
That's so long, that becomes more of a liability when it gets abandoned.
Which we had one in our county that was that way.
We have one right now behind the middle school.
Right. Yeah, we have. So, I mean, it, and all I'm, all I'm doing, Commissioner Harris, is all I'm doing is bantering. I'm-
I know.
This is, you know, I, I was, on some levels, I was quoted in the paper saying this. I would advocate for going down this process. But I think you're right, based off the conversations that I've had, you know, for the last two years with people at Walmart, people at J&amp;W, people at Pete's, people at, you know, obviously, they were upset, but they also, you know, I'd ask them point-blank, "Do you want zoning?" And I would say that more probable than not, the answer was no.
Do they know what that means?
I, I think that they had a really good idea of what it meant for them personally, but not maybe what it meant on a level to the word for the county, I think.
I can assure you, Casey's knew exactly what they would be faced with as far as permits or requirements to build.
Casey's-
Location out there as opposed to in Johnson County or downtown Kansas City.
Oh, absolutely. I totally agree with that construct, yeah. And Casey's has setbacks from KDOT, and their, their fuel tanks are controlled. I mean, they have lots of different laws in place. A gas station is a very interesting micro study on zoning and codes, because they have lots of foreseeability. You know, people driving off from the pumps with their, the handle still in, gas escaping from the trunk, transferring it to the, to the tanks, you know, lightning, I mean, cell phones, on and on.
Didn't stop them from building, no, did it?
Nope.
No, didn't.
Just the quickness-
Safety items.
No, I get it. No, but that's, that's code. That's non-zone.
Yeah, that's code. You're right. I'm not-
Right, right. Yeah, that's, that's great. It's like, try to separate sometimes the two are different, because land use is different than what you build on the land.
I think we have a speaker.
Yes, I have a question.
Tell who you are and put that line.
Yeah. Put that down where we can hear you.
Okay, is this on? It's showing red. Okay. So, on the zoning, I live in the city of Fort Scott, so I know that I'm zoned. I know that I have to get my dogs tagged, go down to the water department. But I grew up in the county, and if you want to have a debate on certain zoning of any kind, you need to do out some sort of flyers. People don't get the paper. They may not listen to Fort Scott radio. But growing up, I didn't want to be told what we could do with our land. If we have a plot and somebody, there's an acre, and they buy, and they build a nice house, we were the McMeachus. We had roosters, and our pig thought he was a dog, and we had goats running around, and sheep, they weren't tied up, they were-
Free.
Free willies. I mean, our roosters, my rabbit, our cats and dogs, our horses roam freely. They stayed in our yard. I mean, we were, we had a little bit of everything in our yard at one time. That's why we always called ourselves the McMeachus. So, if you didn't want to build your real nice home on the acre that was right next door to us, because our roosters and our ducks quacked, and horses and everything else made too much noise, that's your fault, not ours. I don't think, living out in the county, that you should be able to tell anybody what they have. If you want to get a permit, so they, you know, they send out a card from the appraiser's office that says, "If you've done anything," if you need to have something so you know what's going on, or have some sort of restrictions, I think you need to make sure that every Bourbon County citizen knows that something like this is going on.
I think, I think-
To get a discussion going on.
Yeah, this, this is a-
You're going to have a building permit in Lynn County?
We do not. I don't think we-
Hang on. You're building a structure, you're not telling-
Well, let's clear, now, this is really important to clarify a couple of things that Ms. Holdridge said, and I appreciate her comments. One, is that this is a starting point.
It is.
We're not even close to the finish line yet. I mean, this was just an open discussion with the commission to kind of start the process. Two, what Ms. Holdridge was talking about was actually three separate things. There was the code, animal, animal restrictions, which we actually have, we've had that, like, we had some dog, vicious dog ordinance. Jason probably knows that.
Few years ago.
Few years ago, yes. Because I was out in the county then.
Yeah. So, and that, that is a, animals at large is a really hard enforcement thing in our county. You know, we tried to talk about dog enforcement, and it turned into a, a real interesting academic conversation about hiring a dog handler, setting up an dismissal court, you know, interacting with where we kept the animal, you know, on and on. So, you know, a cow getting out of a fence is different than a code on how you build your structure and what is in that code. You know, fire restrictions for a certain kind of wire, or, you know, certain types of shingle that could be used, or, you know, what garage store, or what fire rating the drywall has to be. That, that's different than land use, you know. And Ms. Holdridge brought up a really good example of land use, where if a private citizen wants to sell an acre, and that person decides to build on that acre, it has to be an acre, because you have to get your lateral lines in there. But that's different than a tower.
Right.
Because a tower is a special use that has the ability to be restricted for safety issues.
Correct.
And that's my goal here. It's not to control your pig acting like a dog. My goal is to make sure this tire is not built too close to your house for it to fall and kill your pig.
Right.
Right. Or migration. I understand towers.
I know that for the last two or three years, it's just been nothing but beating us to death. And I know what happens when you start telling people what they have to do. We just went through it for a year, over a year.
But Commissioner, we've got to be really clear. We, in our southwestern part of our county, we actually have restricted permits now, restricted use on tower locations.
You, and it's on a per-contract basis.
Right. But I'm saying, that same, that same, adopting that same restriction for the county might not be a bad idea. It's already, it's already in one area.
On that portion of it, because we didn't restrict the use of their land. We just restricted some of the, some of the variables that was going to be associated with them.
Some of those, I mean, I think-
Well, the three miles from the lakes, that was a state.
Right. But what I'm saying, some of those setbacks were, there are, there are places in our county that have more residential property per acre than that area.
Yes, there are.
So, if that's the case, and the setbacks are within a certain restriction of a residential home-
Fifty in our feet.
You're going to limit the ability to put in additional towers in other areas of our county.
Well, I agree with that.
Would that be agreeable? I mean, I would-
I agree with that, but you know, that's, that's not a special use permit. That's just regulations.
Well, it's regulations that the-
But you're not telling them they can't do it.
No, but you re-
But the northwestern part of the county, there's no cell service. Out by Mapleton, there is no cell service.
That's, 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 that's free market. That goes back to free will. The reason that there's no cell phone service out there is there's not enough people living there to have, to pay for itself. That's the reality of our laissez-faire economics. That's the reality. There's reasons why there's a dead zone between Pittsburgh and Fort Scott, is that the highway traffic is not enough to warrant another tower. And I hope, they're talking about building another one, but-
Yeah, the same problem.
Right.
But the application we have today in the southwest part, for the wind farms, and you had mentioned in some other areas, more heavier residential, would not fit in that area. But with a special use permit, an advisory board could talk to the commission with the contractor and say, "Can we make this work?"
Well, I'm, I'm taking it a step-
That's a special use permit, to come and talk about it.
Well, I'm, I'm actually taking it a step further than that, Commissioner Harris. And I think Commissioner O'Hare is understanding where I'm coming from, and it's angering him a little bit. And I get where his anger is coming from. And what I'm saying is, is that the commission already has adopted a de facto zoning in the southwest quadrant of the county by agreeing to the special use or the setbacks of the property from the towers. So, all you have to do is to have the planning board with the comprehensive plan take that same restrictions that the commission already agreed to and adopt that for the county. And based off residential population masses in other quadrants of our county, it would extremely limit the ability for those towers to be placed in other parts of our county.
Just playing devil's advocate.
I'm just bantering. That's all I'm doing.
But, and Laura, I don't know if you meant this as part of what you just said, but I got this from what you just said. Okay, that's southwest Bourbon County, but what do, what is the northeast, people that live in the northeast part of Bourbon County, or the northwest Bourbon County, they should have a very large say in this, not just people that live in the southwest part of the county. So, landowners in northeast part of the county, or southeast part of the county, or northwest part of the county should have a say in it. I mean, if we create a planning commission that has 10 people from southwest part of the Bourbon County on it, how is that fair to where I live?
Right.
It's not, I mean, now, now, and I haven't said what, I mean, I don't, I mean, actually, I'm not going to say whether I agree or disagree with windmills or anything. I mean, I think people mostly know. But it's not, I mean, I'm sorry, but John Doe in the southwest part of Bourbon County doesn't get to choose, in my opinion, for me, in northeast part of Bourbon County.
Well, not zoning, and that would be-
Especially somebody that lives in Fort Scott doesn't get to choose what I get to do-
Right.
Eight, the 10 miles north of town.
So, that, that, that is, you know, I think the setbacks and things were put in place in this, in the southwest quadrant of the county because of some concerns of the population about safety for structures and, and people and roads.
Well, actually, that was proposed in the original contracts. It just went up a little bit, because it was a standard contract.
Well, the standardness of that was because of the federal regulations.
And the standard is also, was what they negotiated with other non-zone counties.
Right. But the setback-
And we, and we actually went through the process and did our due diligence to find out how many cases were won in non-zone counties.
Right, right. But see, but going back to what, we, we increased the, we increased the setback. I mean, obviously, there's already standards for, okay, let's, let's go down the rabbit hole. I'm just going to, so, a wind farm is not going to place a tower within a certain distance of a road, because they don't want to have the liability of that falling into the road and killing somebody, because they could be sued for hundreds of millions of dollars, and they'll probably lose. A wind farm is not going to place a wind farm close to a residential home, because if it falls on the home and kills somebody, they're going to get sued for a lot of money, and they're going to lose. So, I do agree that there were setbacks that were common sense within the information that was presented to the commissioners and the county council at that time. What happened was, is the setbacks became larger than what was proposed because of some safety concerns that were given during that time for individuals within that wind farm district. And so, when we talk about what Commissioner Beth was talking about, is taking those setbacks that are already, on some levels, already there, I agree with you, Commissioner O'Hare, and implementing those in other parts of the county, it, what Commissioner Beth said, that goes against what that, those are, because we are, we have restricted tower placements in the southwest part of our county. We've, we have those restrictions in place, per-contract with the wind farm people. Now, if John Doe wanted to build a cell phone tower in southwest part of the county, those restrictions are going to, I would say, are imputed on that person, because it's already set up.
Try that.
Right.
But that's by contract, nothing official. His contract with AFAC has nothing to do with the laws in northeast part of Bourbon County.
Because they're not paying me on my phone.
President's not law.
No, but we, no, it's not law. But what I'm saying is, is that if someone says we don't have zoning in our county, we, we have de facto zoning through contract.
In northwest-
Through contract only.
How do I stop him from doing it northeast?
Well, stopping is him is not the right word you want to use.
How do I get him to the table to talk to me about it?
Right. That, that is through zoning.
But the windmill companies are not going-
But that's through, that's a special use permit. They have to do the zoning.
I'm not wanting to say no. I just want-
Right.
Again, if you're going to drag him in that room with 200 people and work me over for three months-
Right.
I'm not going to sit there and say, "I'm wasting my time, because I'm not going to go."
Right.
And the windmill company is not going to go to, to me in the northwest part of the county, where, they're, they're not going to put a windmill on my property.
Yeah.
So, I'm not going to get paid.
When we said we could not stop them, that was a true statement.
I would agree with that. I still, I still-
And you cannot stop them.
Where's the line? If you're not going to stop, if you're not going to make any effort to stop wind turbines, wind turbine development, where's the line? What would happen? What would it take for, what business would come to this town where you would put your foot down and say, "That wind I'm having in Bourbon County"?
That's a good question. That's a good question. I, I don't, I don't know. I mean.
We're talking about looking to enter the future, set by Kai Castle and Ann's forethought.
So, let's, let's, let's go down, yeah, and let's talk about, I mean, I think, I think there is some important things that Ann's discussing. So, as, as Johnson County, you know, God bless them, you know, as, we want this to happen on some levels. As, as the migration occurs down 69 Highway and it gets closer, you know, there's some books. I can get the names of those books. They're actually really good reads about close proximity to major metropolitan areas. With your, get within 40 mi, 40 minutes of a, a major metropolitan area, your life changes. You know, it, you become a commuter, there's a high probability that you become a commuter residency of that major metropolitan area and, and at some point you become a suburb of that area. And so, as 199 Street is now being developed, there's apartment complexes going in. There's some mixed use development that's being planned for that area. Well, 199 Street, I'm, I'm not a big speeder because I don't want to get a speeding ticket, but I can get to 199 Street all day long under 50 minutes. And that's going 78 miles an hour. So, I mean, so the reason that, what Ann's bringing up is, is that what does 20 years from now look like? You know, and I, I understand Ann's passion. You know, we, we, we completely, all of us have experienced the passion that was involved with the wind farms, you know, pro, against, yea, nay, free will, whatever. What Ann's talking about is, what Commissioner Beth was hinting on is safety is different than what I can do with my land. What 20 years looks like with safety, and when I say safety, I'm talking about water, air. You know, it's being talked about on a national level about what does our world look like 20 years from now is different than a wind farm topic. It's bigger than that. It's, it's a broader construct to me. Is zoning is a use of land. It's not necessarily saying you can or can't do something. It's an issue of what do we want, what do we want it to look like?
And that is, that is an unbelievably hot topic. And if you're not getting yourself educated on Biden's 30 by 30 plan and the Green New Deal and the infrastructure plan.
It's big.
We are going to have to, we have got to look forward. Otherwise, the federal government will be telling us what we want to do on our land.
And I, the 30 by 30 plan is very.
How is that different? And just playing devil's advocate, but how is that different than us trying to limit the windmills? That mean?
Yeah, I thought of that too. How is that different? I guess it, it comes through education in, in the way, and being, being a forward thinking.
We got, media is very, very good at educating.
Oh, yeah. That's the only media you're watching? You need to watch another media.
One thing that's happening with 30 by 30 that is potentially happening is they are, and whether it will happen or not, I don't know because I think it's a long ways from any of that being done unless they just do it on their own in the back room. But there has been invitations to a lot of people to the table, meaning wildlife, wildlife organizations.
Well, and you have to look at them. You have to look at all their plans. And I've looked at some of those plans and some of the, some of the ideas and things that they want to set forth in the next five, 10, 15 years are going to encroach upon this, what we're, what we're talking about ag use. Now, again, I, I get it. If, if, if a farmer says, yeah, you can have this to do that with, to protect or whatever. Anyway, I'm going to stop because, yeah.
Well, and what Ann, what Ann is, what Ann is, I mean, what Ann is talking about is, is extreme, extreme land use. And I actually, I better be really careful about what I was about to say. So, what I guess.
Well, it's not extreme land use when you talk about conservation easements and perpetuity.
Yeah, I get that. What I, what I'm, but what, what's scary for certain people that are within a certain industry is those, those uses of waterways. And we have a lot of them in Bourbon County. You know, we have a lot of livestock. And so, to me, you know, I'm, I want to, I mean, I don't, this is such a long conversation. This is like, we could talk about this for days.
We could talk this for days.
So. Well, I mean.
2010, Donald Trump came to Phoenix and wanted to build a 90-story multi-albany unit.
Right.
They did a study. It was going to cost them billions of dollars of infrastructure just to support him to build 90 stories.
Right.
So, they gave him a permit for 45 stories and he said it's not.
Common, but see, there's something about common sense is, you know, you're, if you know, if you're on the Pacific Rim, and I'm not turning around Mike because I'm trying to use the mic. So, so, you know, the Pacific Rim is fascinating to me because you, you live in Seattle or you live in San Francisco or you live in LA, you know that the big one could hit. And so, they have restrictions on codes because they don't want a building to fall on somebody when the big one happens, you know. Or if you live in Colorado and you want to live in the mountains, you're not going to build a house that doesn't have some prevention from avalanches or snow load on your building. So, a Best Buy in Denver, Colorado looks a lot different structural wise than a Best Buy in Joplin, Missouri because the snow load variances are different. So.
My point was your infrastructure within your governmental body may limit.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, that's my, I'm agreeing with you completely. But, but in, in rural America, in southeast Kansas, it's a 100-year-old problem that we couldn't fix because it was already given to us on a silver platter or whatever. We were a non-zone county. And so, what Ann brought up was important is that what does it look like 20 years from now? Well, obviously, no one, no one in the eighties, I think Commissioner Beth would agree with this, that the lake was going to have $800,000 homes on it. I mean, no one in their wildest dreams would imagine a, I mean, I know legitimately, there's a couple of half a million dollar homes out there. When we were growing up in the early nineties, going out there and hanging out on someone's dock and having a couple of cold sodas, I was having a couple of cold sodas. We'd never imagined that the lake would be what it is today. And so, the lack of, well, lack is a strong word. The, the not having the crystal ball that all of us in this room wish we had 20 years ago to buy multiple lots, that didn't exist. And so, Ann's got a point. What, what does Bourbon County look like 20 years from now? I mean, we, we've talked about it with healthcare. We've talked about it with quality of life. We've talked about it with economic development. You know, Lynn County's zoned. And they're, they have a strong code enforcement that I don't necessarily, really don't agree with because of the tax issue there. But they have more money than we do because of the assessed values. That's a whole nother.
A fortune change.
Well, fortunes, but see, I was bringing that up. So, what happens when the coal plant shuts down? Does their code change? Does their zoning change? Does the system change? And so, there's a micro look at a county that has a lot of money now. But the 30 on 30 plan, that coal plant might not be here 20 years from now. And so, what does that county look like that's different than what Bourbon County looks like? Because they don't have the same financial structure that we do. So.
It'll probably be converted to nuclear.
Yeah, probably not, probably not. Basically, the 30 30 plan is not talking nuclear.
No, they're not. They're not. No.
Lots of wind farms.
Coal-fired plants.
Lots of wind farms. And solar, solar plants.
Been a healthy beginning discussion.
Right. Right. I guess what, I guess, you know, the next step, I think, I agree with everyone in the room. I think you should have the public hearings. You should go if, you know, or, or spend some time researching this, going through the statutes and coming back maybe in a couple of weeks and saying, hey, let's talk about this again. Right. And this is, you know, this is best practice.
I don't have a problem adopting what we put in place as far as, as the setbacks and things like that. But again, a lot of those, a lot of the things that we're in, that contract, we're originally in that contract from, from what they, we just expanded on them a little bit. And that was through public input.
Right. But, but I'm going back, you know, once again, devil's advocate, what Commissioner Beth talked about. You are restricting use in other parts of our county for that.
And I don't, you know, and I don't want to do that if, if the public doesn't want to. But then again, my wife says, well, would you put a windmill out on your 80? You bet I would. You know, why not?
Right.
You know?
But you don't have enough wind up in your area.
Oh, I don't know. I got some windy neighbors.
The, the peak, the peak circle, there's only one other area that, well, the, the do technology will have to catch up. You know, we talked about this too.
I personally think.
Batteries are going to change everything.
The wind generation is probably something that won't be around forever.
No, batteries are going to change everything.
Batteries are changing.
One last question. These setbacks and et cetera that you guys worked on, worked on contract, et cetera with APACs. Clifton wants to put a wind farm at his house or his land he owns, which he should.
He wouldn't.
If he, if he doesn't want to meet those setbacks, he don't have to.
Mike, no, no, that, actually, let's use his, let's use his, kind of use your property as a really good example. He would not be able to build a wind farm in his, on his property, on the 55 acres that he has by his house because you have a railroad track to the, to the west that would, that would disallow, the setback from the railroad track would put it basically on the other side of the road. And I'm, I'm thinking in my mind the map, so give me a second as I, then you have residential homes on the, the east side of that. So, you'd actually have to set it back into that backfield. But unfortunately, that backfield, there's another house. So, on that acreage, he wouldn't be able to do any, and then the other land that his mom and dad own, there's no way you could put a wind farm there because you have too many homes within the, within that area and too many roads.
My question, what if he says I'm doing it anyway?
Can't.
Who stops him?
Government, federal government. Federal government will stop him.
Federal agents.
The railroad, the Burlington Northern would not let him. And then the, the road, the county, the county actually could stop him too because of the road. And then the residential setbacks based off the federal regs would not allow for a wind farm.
These regulations have been adopted by the federal state government.
I'm sorry?
Those regulations have been adopted by the federal state government.
Well, no, the, the setbacks from a residential and the setbacks from the, well, I better be really careful. The residential setback is probably one of the common sense things. They're not going to put a wind farm within a certain distance of a home.
How many people you represented didn't have common sense?
Oh, it was the.
I think everybody makes decisions at the time that they do something that they think is in their best interest. How about that for a response?
You got me good. That's good.
Everyone, everyone has sense. They so happy they have.
I might get a little passionate about, I might get a little passionate about the things I guess, but I'm tired of the government intervening in, in my life.
Yeah, I mean, 30, 30 30 is going to cause a, police people that are on mine, we're not advocating for 30 30 or, we're not. That is a whole other.
Well, it, it is, but it isn't.
But see, the house, you know, the.
Right. You know, Ann, going back to that, remember, remember here not too many years ago that, that the EPA was declaring everything a wetland.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, this is kind of the same concept.
But, you know, we talked, we talked about data, you know, the census data has moved a bunch of house seats to the, to the south. And so, in two years, they're already talking that because of the, the census data, the, the house at the federal level is going to switch back to Republican just because of the, the population masses moving. So, you know, we don't know what two years is going to look like, let alone 20 years from now. But if the federal government, the wetlands is a really good example. I mean, if they come in and make some reg, we, we can't supersede, a local government cannot supersede a federal statute. You know, I call it the train, train rule. So, a, a local statute cannot be less restrictive than a federal statute. The federal statute can supersede it. But if a county or a local government wants to have a statute or a law that's more stringent than a federal reg or law, then they can do that. But less regulation is not an option for a commissioner or for a city commission if there's a federal reg. So, you know, obviously, the railroad track in his neck of the woods is not going to allow for a wind farm because they don't want that, that wind farm possibly wrecking their railroad track. And then if it did happen, they would have major civil suit because that train track that runs through his property is a high-volume 38, 40 trains a day kind of thing. So.
But these towers, et cetera, what regulates them?
Clifton, of course, do you live the tracks?
Well, regulations, you know, the, well, that's, that's an interesting point too. I mean, so to get a large load down a highway, it has restrictions. You know, you have to have certain things in place for that to move down a highway. So, obviously, a wind farm can't be so huge that it can't move within the infrastructure.
Right.
So, once again, I mean, there's a common sense approach to it on some levels. But, you know, the, the tower itself can't be so tall that it gets involved with FAA airplane guidelines. I mean, so there, you know, the commission can come in and say, I want to zone, you know, going back to the original. You know, let's say they adopt the same setbacks that were agreed to in the southwest quadrant to the north, the northeastern quadrant. If they wanted to do that, that's a zoning issue and that's a use issue. And so, they would have every right to do that. There would be nothing stopping them once they drop, went through the proper statutory procedures.
Okay. But I know we've been talking about wind farms a lot, but let's talk about towers as well. What regulations prevent your neighbor putting a tower too close to your house? What I seen going on up north, it did happen. Who stops them? Who, who permits?
I think, I think the house, the, the tower you're talking about, I'm pretty sure the house was built after the tower went in. So, you know, if, so I, I think, I think, I think I know which tower you're talking about. I think Clifton's right. I think that house was either built simultaneously or it was actually after the fact. So.
It's close.
Right. And so, let's use the pig farm analogy again because it really helps me. So, if a pig farm is pre-existing and I build a house next to it and the smell irritates me, I don't get a, get a free jail's card.
That's not true because there has been those that have moved into, around dairy farms and they had enough pull and enough sweat.
Well, it's, takes a lot of my.
That has happened. It has happened.
It's a very unique situation when it comes to that because, I mean, I, I'll go, I think I know maybe the case, if Ann's talking about a case. There, there are some situations in Johnson County where there's a dairy farm that's on a certain highway that had to be closed down because of the, the odor. But that, that farmer sold his land for a small fortune. They came, they came in and bought that land. But I'm saying, and my, my analogy is that you have a pig farm and you build a house right next to it. That landowner is not going to get a, get a free, you know, get a jail free card and be able to have civil remedy against the pig farm. Now, the vice versa is, yeah, but if the pig farm isn't there and this landowner, they build the pig farm and that becomes a nuisance, they have every right to sue. And there's case law that would demonstrate that that landowner is going to lose their riches.
If the house was there first and someone put a tower too close, it's a civil matter.
They have absolutely a civil remedy. And they're probably going to, there's a really good chance they're going to win, win some because there's case law that, you know, sunlight in certain jurisdictions, I mean, New York is a great example. You take away someone's sunlight, there's, you know, and that, but that also is a code issue too. But, you know, and I, I always just, there was an attorney in town that just wanted me to have a definition of what real property is. You know, and real property in my mind during this banter was not the land. It was, you know, computers and chairs and things of that nature. But real property is all the way to the center of the earth, to the heavens above. But your real property is what you own. And so, you own all the way to the center of the earth and all the way to the air, that parcel. So, when someone impedes on that parcel, you know, the mineral rights are fascinating. Mineral right law is a totally different world. But when you impede on that little parcel, if you put a tower and there's some really good case law that Ann, Ann knows about where I put a shadow into my house and it's a constant shadow, that person's got legal remedies against that person that's put that tower there that is imputing their sunlight.
Yeah. Okay.
So, there's a lot to this. This has been, we're not a.
Oh, this could.
Yeah.
In my way, nothing changed and that's what the public wants and that's what the commission wants. I'm perfectly happy with that.
I think it's important that we have, I appreciate having this conversation. I really do.
In my point, I guess, through what I have said, is that we have to involve the public.
Have to.
This should not be.
No way. Am I taking? I'm not taking all this, Ann. There's no way this, no way.
11 people in this room or 12 Kindle. It's not, it's got to be the entire public.
Yeah. But I almost want to do like a straw poll. You know, like, I'm serious. Like, just have a box out here. So, I mean, you know, not.
We're not ready for a straw poll.
Yeah, but stuff, stuff the, stuff the ballot box. But I mean, I'd like to know what people's thoughts are for sure.
We have to be careful.
You guys may have to move. You may have to go to Union Town for a night. You have to go to Mapleton for a night. You may have to go to Fulton for a night.
Yeah, and those.
But a lot of times people don't, they don't know that.
Right.
It's like I said, they don't get the paper anymore. They don't listen to Fort Scott radio.
Ignorance is no longer, ignorance is no longer bliss. We, you know, we have to make sure that.
It's got to be a mailing.
Right. But like today, people didn't, I mean, I know for a fact that the agenda was on a nationally recognized website. You know, I have it, I can upload it through Fort Scott Biz and get it on. I can literally be updated every week on what the agenda is going to be through my smartphone. I mean, I can't, we can't, we, we can't call ignorance as bliss anymore. We, people have to be involved. I mean, the, our founding fathers set our government up as a way to, if we don't have public involvement, it won't work.
I agree.
Well, and we have a very lacking, it's a very lacking commodity in our, in our today's world.
Well, time is, time is, you know, going back to some comments that we made last week, time has become a very interesting thing. You know, we, we had a lot of it taken away from us last year. And so, I think people have the ability to go out and spend time on things that aren't wind farm or zoning and coding. I think they want to go out and have some fun and enjoy their life for a little bit. So, you know, I'm not faulting anybody for not being involved because I'd rather go to the baseball game and watch my son play than be at a commission meeting all day long because I didn't get that opportunity last year.
And there's some people that put down their smartphones and disconnected their internet because that's all they did last year was media, 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 Facebook.
We can't go door to door though. I, I don't, I don't know how to do it anymore. You can't go to door to door. You can't knock on, we can't.
No, I just think you send out a letter, whether it be in the taxes, whether it be something in the appraisers.
I wouldn't send it out special. That'd be, we know what that costs. That's thousands of dollars.
I think it needs to be some.
A lot of it gets thrown away.
It doesn't matter. Putting people on notice is important. It doesn't matter. Putting people on notice is important. It's a good starting point. Let me know when you want to talk about it again.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Really?
Yes.
He's gonna have to say anything else?
No.
What time is it?
Well, what is, actually, when, when are you gonna have a work session on the roads? Aren't you getting close to paving season?
Well, we already had one.
That's right, you did. It was open to the public.
Yeah, it was open to the public, pardon?
It's been years.
No, they haven't this year.
About thirty, forty days ago, we had one out to public work, yeah. You was there.
Yep, but we need more.
So, so, so I think-
Did it change our minds, you mean, or?
Well, just more.
Here we go. Here, here we go. We need to have another work session and, and on the hard surface of roads, and you have to keep in mind that we got three hundred miles of roads on paved, roads to look at because you gotta pave it both ways. And-
I'm not being abusive here, but we just keep having the work session till we get the roads on there that you like?
No. The discussion about closing a road, the discussion about the bridges, that's all part of it, not just what we're doing this year.
No, I'm talking about the asphalt roads, our plan.
Or not even, but Nancy, close the road, it will be a public hearing, and the people that are, are affected will be involved. Now, Thirty-Fifth Street is a kind of a unique thing because the property owner owns both sides of the road. And only, and the bridge is, bridge is out or closed, he could put in a petition to close the road, bring it to us, and it's done.
Yeah, this, you know, and we talked about this before, that the processes to close and open a road would never not be done in a public setting. They can't do it arbitrarily, the, the commission, and that's what happened, and really, on some levels with Thirty-Fifth Street, the bridge became so dangerous that they had to close it, but they haven't been able to move forward with that. So, I mean, there is some, I mean, constructs under the statutes are fascinating, and that's what we're talking about, zoning, the constructs under the whole ideology of what it is, is just, it can start really small, and by the time you're done with it, you got codebooks that are
So again, this is a many, many, many year problem from the past. Justin made a comment that we have eleven bridges that are in that kind of condition. That didn't happen overnight.
Let me say, we need to be planning for the future again because in nineteen ninety-seven, we talked about putting back a half a mill for bridges. And at that time, we couldn't afford it. Just think what we'd have today if we put a half mill back for all those years.
But, but the legislators, I mean, we need to talk about that too. Some of the governor's vetoes got overturned yesterday. I mean, the funding mechanisms are gonna become-
Atrocious.
Wow, atrocious, it might be a strong word, Commissioner. I think their funding mechanisms are warranted on some levels with the amount of taxes that people pay, but, you know, three years from now, your mills are gonna look, could look way different than they do right now.
That's correct, they will.
And, and getting-
It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a cumbersome process.
Well, and that's the thing, you could, you could lower the mills now based off the pilot money and what's happening with the valuations, but twenty years from now, you can't get those mills back. And that's what Susan's gonna say, and because once they're gone, under the new laws, you're never gonna be able to get them back.
No.
And that, that's not a bad thing, but we don't know what twenty years of funding, because if nineteen ninety-seven, they would have set back a half a mill for bridges, we would be this problem.
Then we go back down in that rabbit hole discussing what service are we gonna provide? Because if you don't, if you, if you can't keep up with inflation, then you're, you're going to eliminate services.
People. I mean, the bottom line is people.
That's correct.
And then, and, and our, and our form of government, the way that people are in, that absolutely limits the services that you can provide because you're not gonna have people to fix the roads, collect the money, have vacation time for the deeds of, I mean, it goes on and on.
And we're not like some organizations where we can go out and take the transportation budget and sweep it into the general fund.
Well, and you guys don't have anything to sell either, so-
No, we don't.
It's all based off taxes. So, thanks, thanks, Commissioner Harris.
Have a wonderful day.
Yeah, really. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Oh, very.
All right, go home.
Motion carried.
All right.
Well, I wonder if it's still raining out.
Is it still raining out?
Well, I have one more conference I want to do.
What's something exciting?
They tried, they did this legislature in California, and they went on for like ten or twenty years, now it's been all overturned because of that, the road trouble, and they want to get the services. Your service house is actually-
All right, have a good day.
And they start meddling in that, leaving that low control.
Oh, it's raining. Roads on. I deal.
You too. Have a good day, Susan. How, do you don't like me on the family side?
I just, I came down the days to retirement. I know. Five years, I could go part-time. And I'm seriously thinking about just enjoying it as a regular.
I retired, but he retired three times.
I need your signature on this. This is a Wood Cross for Show Graham.
I know, you already told her, and spend as much as you can.
Have a good day.
Get it done, just pay it.
I'm, I'm surprised that they haven't met the statute yet.
Yeah, I'm surprised they haven't put me on it. But we'll go ahead and pay that one since. Have a good vacation?
It wasn't.
It's hard to come back, isn't it?
Hey, Lynn.
What?
I sent you got a mail, can you make corrections?
Hi, Paul.
Yeah, it's still raining. She just wants to know, Clifton, it'll be next replacement on that one.
I don't know. He might be later yet.
Clifton, you know, he's right on time. All right, I'll put on the email.
I put your mind to this.
Yeah, it is, it's like, woo.
It really rained a while ago.
Yeah, gosh. But still looks like it's coming down really good, though, like this one, so. How've you been?
Good, good.
Good.
We just got back from vacation.
Oh, I hope that's what it was.
Yeah, we, we took our camera, went down to Gulfport for a week.
Where'd you go?
Gulfport, Alabama.
Wow. Well, we were at Joplin Island for a while, and that's just right across the lake in Alabama. Yeah. Beautiful area.
Oh, yeah.
Lots of-
It seems like there's lots of wind though, was that what you meant?
No, not for us. Lots of- Camping.
Yeah, we bought a different camper, a little bigger one.
That's great. Nice, nice for a break.
Oh, good.
Yeah, oh my gosh, that's really good.
Kitty did it right then.
Yeah, no, she's supposed to get court by some, she's supposed to send me an email or text message saying, I don't want it. And it says county, county attorney or county pastor. I'll be to the right.
Okay.
Because you, you actually, it's pretty common sense, you can make the decision on your own.
Well, a young attorney apparently did, is in the, in the state that's doing affidavits of non-productions. They've always been overized.
Right.
And he is the trustee of the trust, so, you know, he signed it, but he attested that this is true.
Ooh, that was stupid.
Yeah, and he-
Hopefully, there's not a lot of money in that trust.
Demanded that it be recorded. I wouldn't have recorded it. I would have refused it.
Right, someone recorded it?
Well, she refused it, but then he demanded.
That's different legal advice, that's not under cora. What's your, what's your position on that? What's your association say?
Several people told her not to record it. Some said, stamp it with file, with the request of the filer and let it go to court if it has to, but she sent it to Secretary of State's office.
So it's getting an opinion from them.
But I wanted an opinion because I would have refused it, and then, then I stamped it with-
That's a different kind of legal advice. I would probably, I don't know if she has to do that.
Okay.